The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
Okay, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. Or not. All board members are present, and I entertain the first action item.
I move that the resignations as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the employment of staff as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the transfer of Renee Everie Principal at Dr. Rosa Manoka Hill, 12 months, to District Alternative Education Administrator and Hearing Officer at the District Office Building, 12 months, as presented, effective August 7th, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And Renee is here.
Yes.
I move that the transfer of Lynn Eldridge, Associate Principal at Dr. Rosa Manoka Hill, 12 months, to Principal at Dr. Rosa Manoka Hill, 12 months, effective August 7th, 2018, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney? Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And Lynn is here. I move that the transfer of Seth Minal, Associate Principal at Washington Middle School, 11 months, to Associate Principal at Preble High School, 11 months, effective August 7th, 2018, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And Seth is here.
Seth is here.
I move that the transfer of Ashley Flowers, Teenage Parent Program Teacher at East High School, 191 days, to Associate Principal at Franklin Middle School, 11 months, effective August 7th, 2018, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Carried six zero. And Ashley is here.
Yes, she is. I recommend that the transfer of Justine Skog, Music Choral General Teacher at Edison Middle School, 191 days, to Associate Principal at Edison Middle School, 11 months, effective August 7th, 2018, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And Justine is here. And lastly, I move that the transfers of staff as listed be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikoff?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And I don't think any of them are here, so it is what it is. Alright.
Alright, at this point, the board will work to identify, we're going to screen the board applicants for the open position. We had 23 applicants, they were, it was difficult to select through them, there's many fine candidates in that, in the group. And what I'd like to do, what we did last time was to have board members indicate their, to start with, indicate their top two choice. And I don't know if, I was thinking of having us write it on a piece of paper, and then I will read, and not that we're, I will read who, the name of the person and the two people they recommend, because if we go around the room, and I don't know if we do it that way, we may end up with 12 candidates, which I suppose isn't a bad place to start either. So whatever the board would prefer to do, whether we write it or do it early, I think, but starting out with our top two.
We write it, and then you would say, Becker said these two, and yeah.
Yeah, Becker recommends these two.
So that way it's not any, yeah.
Yeah.
It's transparent.
It's transparent, but it's, it gives people a chance to, I mean, you know, certain people will have more votes than others, and that may influence our discussion. Does that sound okay to everybody? Go ahead, Rhonda.
Are we allowed, or are we able to, I guess, have any commentary about why we chose the two?
Yeah, I mean, we'll end up talking about the ones we choose, because we'll have to narrow it down. I assume we'll have to narrow it down. And we also have to decide how many people we want to interview. Last time we interviewed seven in one evening. And, oh, I forgot to, Sandy, do you have a list of questions we used last time? Did you bring them? Okay, we don't need those now, but we'll talk about the questions and the interview protocol once we've selected the people. Okay, we'll get them later. And if anybody would like to say anything before we write our top two choices down, that's fine too, or?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I thought that, you know, when we did this last fall, it was, it was difficult to winnow the 27 down to the folks that we interviewed. I think this group of 23, even more so, this was very, very difficult. The letters that were written, the background, extremely difficult to try to sort and order them, because the letters were good, the people are very, very sincere, the commentary that they made was just top-notch, I was very, very impressed with the slate of folks that expressed interest.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree. Rhonda?
So I wasn't part of this last time, I was a candidate however, which was a great opportunity. But I would say, there were a lot of letters. It's really great to see a lot of people interested in serving on the board, for sure. And I hope that anyone that doesn't make it actually does run, because that's an entirely different experience, and it also shows that people are definitely paying attention and invested. I tried to make it as easy as possible for myself, I set up some criteria, I guess, for me personally, I'm interested in people that have some skin in the game. I think a board of seven people initially has, they have, you know, there's two parents that have kids in the district, and I think that we could improve on that. So I'd love to see someone with, that's, you know, that's a parent that has kids currently attending school. Also, what I, what I looked for as well is, have they demonstrated their investment, their commitment, interest in, in kids, in children? For me personally, that means they've served on a parent group, they've also, you know, possibly ran for office, they've put themselves out there in a way that does not include a paycheck, and I think that says a lot. So that's, that's basically what I looked at. I also, you know, I'm hoping to have someone that's, that has some, some natural interest in marginalized, vulnerable kids, so that's, that's what I have to say about that.
Just for the record, the other four have had kids in the school district, and at least one of us, that's me, has grandchildren in the district, so I would say that we all have skin in the game, or have certain folk skin in the game.
I would agree with that, but I would like, just personally, I would like to see some more parents on the board whose kids are attending, and, you know, they, they come home every night with their experiences, so I'd like to see that.
Andrew?
I have, I have a top two, there's certainly more, you know, more than the two that I would want to see interviewed, but I think that just as a straw poll, top two is a good, a good starting point to see what, what happens. There's definitely a few more I'd like to see get a shot, depending if others pick them or not, but.
Okay. Yeah, and we don't have to, I mean.
It's non-binding.
It's a starting.
It's a starting point.
Non-binding.
Doesn't mean everybody that gets in the top two, we end up interviewing, I mean, we may have conversations and pull somebody else up that, that wasn't, so, yeah, I just look at it, there's a starting point, so. Alright, so, I gotta write mine down. So your name at the top and your people.
Oh, I didn't put my name. Can't you tell I'm in my messy writing?
Alright, I'll have them here. My, my first two were Ashley Betts and Jacob Magnuson. Andrew Becker's were Kristen, Christina Shelton and John Yonkey. Katie's are Angela Kowalczek-Adrians and Kiran, or Kiran Cot. Ed is Eric Duncan and Dan Kiernan. Laura McCoy is Jim Van Abel and Dawn Smith. And Rhonda is Christina Shelton and Eric Duncan. So, did, is somebody, right, I didn't write them down. How many do we have total?
Ten.
Okay. And we have two, as I recall, with double votes, and that's.
Duncan and Shelton.
Duncan and Shelton, okay.
I'm sorry, Andrews was who?
Andrews was.
John Yonkey.
John Yonkey and Christina Shelton. And then everybody else was a single. So, I guess the next thing for us to decide is how many we would like to interview, and then we can work to create that list. Does anybody have any?
Do we have, do we have, what, seven last time?
Seven.
And maybe even scheduled eight and one withdrew or something?
No, I think we had seven.
Seven, seven and seven came?
Yeah, they all came.
That, to me, seemed to be a lot, I would, I would think we might be able to, well, okay, I went into this thinking we might, five might be able to take care of this, but maybe we just discovered it, it won't, maybe, but, I don't know, I think more, it seems unlikely that more than five people would really have a serious chance of, of getting selected, but maybe not. I just don't want to waste people's time with having too many, but at the same time respecting, you know, board members wanting to have, obviously, people get to interview.
Well, I'm not, not sure that, that would, people interviewing would consider that their time is wasted, because it gives them a chance to really, you know, present themselves. Otherwise, all we have is what they decided to write down on, on the paper.
My suggestion is we, we stay with seven, we, you know, not that it was a precedent, but for lack of longstanding precedent, that's what we did last time, and I would kind of follow.
Alright, I'm, I'm good with seven.
I will go seven.
Alright.
Anybody else?
I guess I'd wait until the discussion ensues to see if there are compelling reasons to.
Go up to eight?
To go up to maybe eight.
Well, I mean, did you, I wasn't here, was it difficult with seven? Was it, I mean, they were half-hour interviews, so was it?
They were actually 20.
Were they?
Twenty to 25 minutes.
Twenty minutes, we, we scheduled a half hour.
Yeah, half hour to 25 minutes.
For.
Trust me, I remember.
But I think we asked people to come a little early in the event that the person ahead of them finished early, and some did.
Yeah.
We also said they were, you know, because it was open, they could sit in.
They were willing to stay and sit in on them.
I recall we had talked about six and an alternate, and then just stuck with seven. We didn't go with seven and an alternate for eight, I think, you know, the original discussion was the seventh would have been an alternate, but then we decided, well, let's just go ahead with seven. That's how I remember it.
So having us all pick two, then what do we have?
We have 10.
We have moved out to 10.
And two people have got two votes each.
I think then, did we go to our, our third choice and see if any of the first two got additional votes?
Oh, we could do that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Why don't we just, we can do the third vote early?
Yeah.
I think. Do you have number three?
I think, hold on.
You're thinking?
I was, I had five ready to go, so I need to.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back to you if you want.
I had Dawn Smith as my third.
Okay. I had Angela Kowalczek-Adrians as my third.
John for me. Yonkey.
Yonkey.
John Yonkey.
Laura?
Jacob Magnuson.
I had Dawn Smith.
Andrew?
Dawn Smith.
Alright, so.
We have six people with more than one vote at this point, so.
Yeah, Dawn has four, John has two, Jacob has two, Angela has two, Eric has two, and Shelton has two.
Dawn, John.
So if we were to just take six off the list that have more than one vote, we'd have Eric, Christina Shelton, Eric Duncan, Christina Shelton, Dawn Smith, John Yonkey, Jacob Magnuson, Angela Kowalczek. I don't know how you say her name, Kowalczek?
Kowalczek-Adrians?
Kowalczek-Adrians.
Yeah, it's Z-E-K, is it Czech still? Okay.
Should we do another round and see what happens?
I'd almost go through.
Well, I would suggest that what we do is look at those folks who already have one from, from a first choice, and see if anybody has them in their top five, or, you know, listed at number four or five.
Yeah, my, my four and five are both on, both already have votes.
So are, so are mine.
So I would, I would almost go through round four, then go through round five.
Alright, let me redo my paper. Because it's getting, I didn't. Okay. So, Andrew, who's your four and five?
So I had, I had Magnuson as my fourth, and I did have, I had a hard time separating the, the fifth one, but I guess it won't matter, because they didn't receive other votes, but I just did want to point out, I was having, having worked with Joel Denny and setting up a meeting with him and going through his classes, social work presentation, I was, I was really impressed with what he did, but he didn't have other top two votes, but I just want to say I was impressed. I also, I also still feel strongly, as I did last time during the selection process, Aaron Lee is a recent graduate who really, really threw himself into trying to make the district a better place, working on policies, and if, I guess if we were stuck, if we were in a different position and we were looking for a couple more to add to the pool, I'd like to see those get in the mix, but my, the other one I had was Tiffany Smith, who also didn't have votes, so I guess I would just have, I would just say Jacob Magnuson.
Okay. Wait.
Jake Magnuson.
You already.
That was my fourth, and those, so the others weren't, I don't have anyone else who was in.
You don't have a fifth, okay.
I, I don't, I have, I have kind of a tie for fifth, none of whom are in this list already, so.
Alright, Ed?
I have John Yonkey and Jim Van Abel, four and five.
Laura?
I have for number four, Kiran Cot, and number five, Dan Kiernan.
And I have same, Kiran Cot and Dan Kiernan. Katie?
I have Ashley Betts and Jake Magnuson.
Okay. And Rhonda?
Beth Lane and Jake Magnuson.
Okay, so Beth Lane's not on here, Jake Magnuson, okay. Let me just, sorry, let me transfer the other votes over. Let's see, two, Dan had, where'd he go? One more.
Six Magnuson.
Christina had two. Dawn Smith has four, John Yonkey had two, Jacob had two, and Angela had two. Alright, so Jake Magnuson has five, Dawn Smith has four. Dan Kiernan.
Has three.
And.
Kiran Cot.
John Yonkey have three. Oh no, Kiran got, sorry.
Kiran has three.
Forgot to add the singles in here. Who put Dan Kiernan on the list? I did, you did?
And Ed.
He was number five.
And Ed? Did you? No, so three, okay.
Kiran Cot or Dan?
No, Dan Kiernan.
They each have three.
Okay.
Okay, so John Yonkey and Kiran. Three, three, three. And then we've got one, two, three, four, everybody else with two.
Two have five.
I have five. And I have, well, five more that each have two votes.
Shelton and, you know, Shelton and Duncan initially, you know, they started with two votes, so they're coming from stronger, one, one could argue.
I keep prepared with a couple more choices too, if you want to go another round.
Yeah, I don't know that that's going to help us. Well, I mean, I suppose it could.
Do you want to go one more round, see what that lends us?
Is there any reason why we wouldn't just go between the top two, everyone's top two?
Because then we're interviewing 10 people?
Right, but, I mean, at some point, we're just, the numbers are shifting in an interesting way.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
When you have, you have a situation where now, if people, if we're going below the, the five, I mean, if, I, I mean, I think, you know, one of them, one of them was mine and one of them wasn't mine, but if, if we have the five people, and then Duncan and Shelton are the ones with two that had initial, top two, two initial, top two votes, then, then we'd have, then we'd have seven, at least for me, with that slate, I wouldn't feel any things, anyone seriously missing. If we took Magnuson, Smith, Cot, Kiernan, Yonkey, Duncan, and Shelton, I'd feel well covered personally.
Go from top down again.
Magnuson, Dawn Smith, Kiran Cot, Dan Kiernan, John Yonkey, Eric Duncan, and Christine Shelton.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
That's seven.
Did everyone out of that list have at least one person out of their top two?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes?
Yes.
Yep. So can you repeat it one more time?
Jake Magnuson, Dawn Smith, Dan Kiernan, John Yonkey, Kiran Cot, Eric Duncan, Christine Shelton.
Will we go with that?
I suggest that we make that official with the motion. I don't think we did that last time, but I think it'd be appropriate.
Yeah, I think we should.
Can we vote? Okay.
So I'll, I'll make the motion. I move that the following people be selected for interviews for the board vacancy candidate, those people being Eric Duncan, John Yonkey, Kiran Cot, Dan Kiernan, Jacob Magnuson, Christina Shelton, and Dawn Smith.
Second.
Any other discussion? Sandy?
Sitnikoff?
Actually, can I go back? I'm sorry. I think it's important that we actually, for the record, for the public, we share a little bit about why we made our decisions, I think that's fair. I would, I would, I would hope that we could do that, all of us, even if it's just a little blip of the reasons why you chose. I mean, you know, the electorate comes in, they choose a, a board member, in this situation, there's a vacancy, so we're doing it. I think it's, we owe it to people that voted us in to tell them why, at least a little bit.
I find that, I'll, I'm happy to, our top two, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
My top two, again, were, were Mr. Duncan and Mr. Kiernan, and I, I selected Eric Duncan as one of the top two based on my knowledge of his background. He did run for board last time, although that wasn't the, the total decision-making factor. He does have skin in the game, as was said, his background as a professional in the community, I think that he could add a lot to the board. Dan Kiernan has had a couple of children, actually, three children go through the Green Bay Schools. He has been involved in lots of activities with the school district, notably East High School, Washington Middle School, and he was on the Boundary Task Force as co-chair, and he's a proven quantity, and therefore I think he'd be an excellent person to interview as well.
I'll, I'll go. I, among a list of, among a list of strong candidates, all of whom I look forward to interviewing, I had Christina Shelton and Mr. Yonkey as my top two, I think that they both, they both have been very, very active, they're very, they show deep concern for people who don't have a voice through various work that they've done, either within advocating for their own kids or, and advocating in the community, I think they both bring that perspective to the table, which pushed them to the top for me, a list that also included other people I'm happy to be interviewing as well.
I'll go. I chose Christina Shelton and Eric Duncan. Christina has impressed me, she's actually come to board meetings and advocated for kids, for the district, for, for teachers. I think it shows a lot of investment when you're willing to come and speak to the board. I think that's not an easy thing to do. She's also invested in organizations outside of the district. outside of the district, like I had mentioned before, working with marginalized and vulnerable population. And, and that's something that I would love to see here at the table. Also with Eric Duncan, I believe when you run for office, you prove your investment right there. And he did come in fourth place. And I think he's, to some degree, already been chosen by the, the voters and, and the public. And those are the reasons.
And I picked, I had Ashley Betts on my list. I like the fact that she would bring a teacher lens to the board. She also has, I too like having people who have kids, active kids in our district. And her child would be just starting kindergarten. And, and it sounds like she's done some collaborative work during her career when she was working. The other one I picked was Jake Magnuson. He, speaking to the, watching out for, I forget how you phrased it, people that.
Marginalized.
Marginalized students or students that don't always have a, a voice. He's worked, he works at DVR, which is certainly a place that does that on a regular basis. He's also a parent of a, of a fifth grader.
I picked Andy Walczek-Adrians. And I appreciate the fact that she is just starting out with her young child in Green Bay area public schools. She has board experience through the Village of Alloway. She pledged to bring her ideas in a creative, respectful manner to the board. And I, I wanted to get somebody with younger children, so I think that's, that spoke to me. Also with Kiran Kot, he has a young son at Da Vinci. And I like his, the diversity that he would bring to the board and the experience, his professional experience as well.
I, I chose Dawn Smith. I like that she, her, her daughters, they, they've been very, very involved in a lot of different aspects of our district. And she, in her letter, which I, I thought was a really good letter, she mentions working to solve school violence, bullying, and large racial discrepancies between staff, teachers, and students. That struck me. And then my other choice was Jim Van Abel, who I like the fact that he said that his strengths are communication, collaboration, and teamwork. And also, since this person might be on the board for a limited period of time, I like that he said that he could quickly and efficiently transition into it with his knowledge. I, I got to meet him some months ago in his, when he was still principal at Lombardi. And I liked the way that he interacted with people. I remember coming away with a very positive feeling about him, his staff there. And that kind of stuck with me, so.
All right. And I would like to reiterate again, I think what Ed said, though, we had a lot of really excellent candidates. And it took me a long time to winnow it down to a list of five. And, and as you can hear of the, of the initial 10 that we recommended, they all have, definitely all have strengths to bring. So if no one else has anything to say, I'll call a roll call. All right, Sandy?
Hi.
Morning.
Hi.
Morning.
Hi.
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 Carried six, zero. All right, then, in terms of the format, um, do we want to do it the same as last time? As I recall, we, we scheduled them on the half hour with the idea we'd try to keep at least five minutes of transition. Is that, am I recalling correctly?
You, you asked the interview questions. And then we had candidates wait outside the room while the other candidates interviewed, allowed follow-up questions, 30-minute interview, and then offered the candidate the ability to make a two-minute stay.
Okay. So what was our schedule?
On a half hour.
It was, okay.
Six, six thirty, seven. We started at six last time.
Okay. And this time we're starting at five? All right. And we have.
On the fourteen.
And we're interviewing six?
I thought it was six.
Seven.
Seven. Lost my list. Oh, I know. It's in here. Tucked it in here. So then that would put us till, yeah, that sounds fine. And then interview questions, obviously we have a list from last time. I don't know if.
We had six questions last time.
Okay. If we want to look at those and.
Maybe we could get that list of questions, if we've got any suggestions, get the suggestions for changes to you, Brenda?
Okay.
I'll email out the last time's questions.
Okay. Does that work for everybody? And then if you have, yeah, suggestions, if you want to eliminate one, change one, whatever suggestions you have, I'll take all those suggestions. And then, I'm trying to think, if you could, can we have the suggestions by Wednesday morning? Is that too short a turnaround? Because then Ed and I could look at it during our meeting on Wednesday afternoon. So if you have them by Wednesday noon?
That's fine.
Does that work?
So you're sending those to us, and then we're giving you suggestions, or we're just sending suggestions?
No. Well, we'll send the questions, so you have us starting.
If you want to send them now, people can bring them tomorrow, too.
Oh.
Our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, that's true.
That's right.
Can you just send it to us now? I mean, or, but, yeah, as soon as, I mean, we're, okay. All right. So if you have suggestions back to me by noon, actually, why don't you send the suggestions to Sandy? Then we won't get ourselves into any walking quorum problems. And then Ed and I will look at the questions and figure out what makes sense. Six questions was, seemed about right last time for that, a length of time. And then, of course, you know, we ask follow-up questions to, based on the specifics of each interview. All right. Is there anything else we need to cover? All right. I would entertain a motion for adjournment then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. We'll start again at 5:30. I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Sorry, I gotta find my agenda here. All six, or actually, five board members are present. We have one excused. Also at the table joint to my left is our superintendent, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld. To my far left is our board secretary, Sandy Heller. And we also have two intercity student council members here today. One is Noah Becker from West High School. And of course, I can't find, sorry.
And the mystery guest.
The mystery guest is all these papers. Anyway, can you introduce yourself?
My name is Owen Brennan.
All right, thanks. And what high school, Owen?
I go to Prebo High School, and I'll be a junior.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll eventually find your paper, but. All right. And then, also as a reminder, member, to, for those who would like to look at minutes from past meetings or our current handouts, you can, can view those by going to our district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on our district at the top, and then Board of Education on the left. And then on the left menu, again, you'll find a link to agendas and minutes. And this link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. And at this point, it's time for our open forum. I don't have any forums filled out. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board today? All right, seeing none, we will go to our agenda. First is teaching and learning work session, and that'll be facilitated by Ed Dorf.
Thank you. We have a couple of discussion items. First one is the school safety grant, round two.
Thank you. Mike Stengel's going to join me. Chris is out today, but if you have any questions about the potential projects for the second round of the grants, Mike is here to be able to respond to those. Obviously, we're very grateful for the first opportunity for the safety grant, and we're thrilled that we were awarded it. Recently, we learned that there will be a second round. So I want to talk a little bit about it and get some guidance from the Board of Education, how you would like us to move forward. We do have some concerns that I want to spell out. And then I've shared with you a list of what we're thinking about if we were to pursue the grant and be awarded it. And then the last part of the document reviews some of the new prerequisites and our concerns, as well as ways that we think we could do it. But again, looking for guidance from the Board of Education. We, we listed four different concerns. For example, capacity for a team to write and manage the grant. The superintendent did suggest that maybe we utilize a grant writer, which we have done in the past. So if the board wants us to pursue this grant opportunity, I think we would probably go that route. Capacity for a team to ensure that the district meets the new prerequisites, which I'll talk about in a little while. Securing accurate quotes and bids. The timeframe for writing this grant, it needs to be returned or submitted, I'm sorry, by August 30th. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. Chris wasn't sure, and I don't know if Michael would, would see anything different, wasn't sure that he could, in that period of time, get accurate quotes and bids. So perhaps they would accept estimates. We'll, we'll look into that further. And then for me personally, the, the fourth point, adding additional required trainings and meeting responsibilities on our, our staff that have already expressed to us that workload was a, a big concern of theirs over the last couple of years. One of the prerequisites is having 10% of our full-time teachers and counselors take a 12-hour mandatory training. That for us would be, Jean helped us with the numbers, we're looking at about 380 teachers. We would include the counselors in that, so about 45 of the counselors. Concern about having that happen, the, the 12-hour mandatory training. We do have until August 31st of 2020 to fulfill that. But, but, and, and we probably would do a summer training. But again, do we make it mandatory to ensure that we, we get the 380? Things that we need to talk about and consider if, if you advise us to move forward. I think what we'll do is open it up for discussion. And then if you could provide guidance.
Questions?
Can you just, is there a possibility to just kind of go through with the first grant? Is there anything that was requested or discussed that isn't able to be, you know, isn't happening with the first grant? Is there anything else that's on the list that isn't able to, you know, work with the first grant? Is there, because it feels like this isn't something that, like, the flavor of it sounds like it's not something that we're, we're probably going to do, or we're not being asked to do. And is there a reason? Is everything satisfied at this point?
I see what you're asking. I, I would say that the first round helped us immensely. We, we had very good security and safety measures in place, but it helped us enhance, or it will help us enhance those. There were some things that we weren't able to fully do, which Chris has listed here. It, it would help. Do I feel comfortable with where we're at right now with just the round one and what we already had in place? Yes. But I think, I think our schools would respond by saying these additional pieces would be helpful. It's, it's that weighing for me, and I know this goes a little bit off of what you're asking, but does the additional security measures, measures as listed here cancel out the ask of 380 teachers to take a mandatory 12-hour training? I, I think it would help, if that answers it.
There was a, a limit on the advanced portion of that first grant at $20,000 per site. I mean, it averaged over the entire district, of course. So there were things on the initial wishlist, wish list, that couldn't be purchased because they reached the limit of what that grant was available, of what was available to that grant. So I'm looking at some of the things, some of the, the technology things, like a P A system upgrade, I would imagine the exit door line, some of those things, electronic card access, would have been, I believe would have been on the wishlist for the first go-around, but they just, you know, ran out of, ran out of money, so to speak, from what was allowable. So.
That's correct.
And on that, on that note, I know there are some elementary, there's an elementary school that their concern is they can't actually hear with their P A system when they're outside or when they're in the hallways. It's not clear whether it's a, a general announcement or it's a security announcement. They, they, they can't distinguish what it is.
Right.
I can just respond to that one. That is something that either has been or will be documented, discovered, documented in the site assessments that have to be done by January 1st of 2019. The protocol that's used does look at the P A system and whether or not there are dead spots, both inside and outside. So it's something that should be in the works as far as documenting those, correct?
Correct.
Right. I mean, several elementary schools, you know, over the years, it was standard practice just to put speakers into the classrooms for the public address systems. And as we have been updating our schools, we've been adding them into the corridors and, you know, exterior, so that if students are in the corridors at passing times, or just walking between classes, or out on the playground, that they can also hear their announcements.
And also, at the secondary schools, concerns in tech ed areas, gymnasiums, music rooms, band and orchestra rooms because of the, I, I know that visual indicators have been placed in schools to, to help out with that as well.
Correct.
How much is the second grant worth?
Gosh. Is it 45 million? Mr. Dorf, does that sound right?
It's a total of $45 million. And it'll be awarded, where the, the first grant, the advanced portion of the first grant was awarded on a per building, $20,000 per building, based on however many buildings you had designated. This is going to be awarded on a per pupil basis. And there is, I don't remember what the bottom line is, but I think the max is up to two and a half million per district. So it, the, the funding formula is a little bit different on this grant than it was the first one.
So you're saying that the, the timeline is kind of a problem with writing a grant, but is this, did, did all schools receive the information at the same time, and they all have the same timeline?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty tight turnaround. This is unusual, that, that timeline is unusual.
Was there an explanation for why they gave you that little amount of time?
I would refer to Mr. Dorf again. I'm, I'm not aware.
Well, the explanation I've heard, and, and, you know, take it with a grain of salt, is there were concerns about getting these grant applications in and getting the ball rolling before the fall elections. Concern that, you know, if there were, if there were huge changes, that, that might impact whether or not they follow through on it. Now, you know, don't take that to the bank. That's what I was told by, by one source, so.
But can I also say, on the political conversation, that if we actually don't attempt to do this, that's not an ideal situation either?
I agree.
Michelle, and then Brenda, please.
Vicky, if we could, it's, and Mr. Dorf, you would know this probably as well. It's, and that's why when we talked about capacity, because we felt the same way. We thought it was really important opportunity to take advantage of. We looked at what was starting the first weeks of school, wanting to make sure we had our things in place. And recognizing that, also the fact that it sounds like there's great opportunity, if the fewer people who apply, the greater opportunity. We'll have more resource for our kids. And so it was one of those kinds of discussions that we've had. We have had support with grant writers in the past. And I think that that would be something that, again, Mr. Coller's not available for the next week. We just started seeing timelines crunching closer and closer, that if we, if the board is in agreement, we would really, we, we think it's very important. It's just capacity right now, just the timing is, is less than ideal, but.
But with the grant writer, that could.
Well, that could be addressed.
I think, yeah.
I think, yeah.
Brenda?
So there's, so we could hire a grant writer just for this project?
Correct.
There's people that do that kind of work?
Right.
And then is there any way that we could pay for the grant writer out of the grant? Is that any part of it?
I don't think so.
No?
Yeah, I don't think so.
And do you have an estimate of what the cost of something like that?
Yeah, I had, I had budgeted $2,500 for grant writing services for the entire school year, so it would really depend on the amount of hours, what this person would charge.
Okay. And it's by the hour charge, is that how it works? Shoot. And then my last question is the, you had mentioned that the schools would like some of what's on this list. Are there 380 teachers willing to go through 12 hours of professional development or is this going to be something where we're strong-arming people that don't want to do it?
I haven't seen the training yet. I'm told they're still working on it, but that it's, it's closely, looks like the SRO training on mental health, adolescent mental health. If they can make it exciting enough and rewarding enough, I don't think we'll have trouble getting people, but that'll be the key.
You don't know what it is yet?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Rhonda and.
Okay. But if you think about it collectively, it's 12 hours to receive money to make your school safer.
Right. Yeah, so do we, do we, the question would be, how do we go about determining who those 10% are and do we make it mandatory for that 10%? A lot of things to consider. What if I don't get 380 people that are interested in doing it? Then I don't know what the next step would be.
Well, one of the things that, that could be done is, and this would be within the allowable, within the grant, since the grant would pay for substitutes and travel and expenses, what have you, would be to assign people to go to it and, and, you know, I mean, it's during their workday, that sort of thing. You can make it a requirement of, of their, their job and the grant then would, and this would be something that I think the grant writer would have to look at, you'd have to make that decision as far as whether you would send people during their regular work time, which I think is only fair because people need to be paid for their time. But again, the grant will pay for substitutes and will pay for lodging, meals, you know, the per diem, so. And one more thing, I mentioned a bottom level, it's, the way this is laid out, again, a per pupil funding formula, they really haven't worked out, but no district will receive less than $10,000 and the, as I said before, the ceiling is up to two and a half million. So we could potentially receive two and a half million dollars on this grant, depending on what's being asked for, how it's written and, and yeah, time is of the essence.
Right. I would just, if I could comment on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta go with Laura first.
Ideally, doing it during the school day would work best, I think, for our teachers. We had discussed that, the concern about having enough substitute teachers and is the DOJ planning to offer that, many, many times throughout the next two years so that we could sign up and get enough staff to go on?
Well, it would have to be with 380 people, I don't, we're not going to bring everyone into the auditorium at Preble and do it all at one time.
We talked about that as an option.
Laura, go ahead, please.
It says 10% of full-time teachers and counselors to a Wisconsin Department of Justice-approved 12-hour training. That, who's actually going to do the training? Who's the vendor? Do you know?
Right now, it sounds like DOJ is managing that piece.
Okay, so they, someone in that department will actually have the people and the capacity to do the training? Or they, they?
Yeah. I suspect what they will do at some point is, is maybe partner with CISA's or a group where they already have trained, people that are trained and qualified to do that, but we haven't had answers on that yet.
Okay, because that would be a huge contract if you were going to give that to a third party.
Correct.
Which would have, you know, political ramifications as well.
Correct.
Katie?
I think the, the piece about the teacher participation, if we could even have options, because I know a lot of teachers who would much rather do a workshop in the evening or even on a weekend, rather than lose time in the classroom. And I think we need to, we would be compensating these teachers regardless of when they're taking it, so I, I wouldn't rule out the, out of the, the normal school day timeline, because I think there are a lot of people who would.
To that end, DOJ will be setting up the training and they haven't finalized how they're going to do that yet. And they're still, I know that they are getting a lot of questions from districts about, you know, how are you going to do this? Here are suggestions, that, that's all ongoing. I'm going to be speaking, personally, I'm going to be speaking with the Director of the Office of School Safety on Friday, and that's one of the things I hope to talk to her about, is the, the plan, is they're looking at that to be as flexible as possible because, I mean, my goodness, almost 400 people for us, that's.
Right, flexible and relevant.
Yeah. Rhonda, please.
So I have two questions. So number one, because of the time constraints, would we be then given options to look at and approve of before it would be sent for the grant writer to submit? Is that part of it or is it just going down the list of what?
God, that's really a great point.
Because of the time?
Yeah.
Also, because of that time, I wonder about, you know, this is a contingency, right? So you have, there's, this is, this is what we're supposed to do in order to receive this. Is there going to be some sort of contract so that maybe we actually do our part and we don't receive what we need? Because it's a contingency, right? Is there any sort of document or contract that we can see before we spend money on a grant writer, before we go out there and spend time deliberating what we want it spent on? Is there any way to have some sort of security for ourselves?
Is it with the grants?
I haven't seen the grant materials, but that would be typically where you would find those, exactly what the form of that agreement is going to look like, because there's a two-year, as I read this approximately, a two-year performance time period, right? For the training that we would have to complete and, and the funds being contingent upon that, but presumably received prior to full completion of that. So there would definitely be a set of things that you'll have to agree to, whether those are out there yet or not, I don't know.
Sorry, I have one more question. So because this all smells very political to me, is there a possibility that this actually takes longer than it's supposed to, to receive the funds in order to implement the safety measures? Is there?
I think anything could be possible.
Right.
Yeah, I.
Spend money on a grant writer, you put it out there, the election passes.
Our, our hope is that DOJ, regardless of who's in power, would continue with obligations that have already been presented. That's certainly our hope. I'm looking at the timeline to address your first point. I don't have a board meeting on my calendar for the 27th. Is there one that night currently scheduled? There is?
No.
There is.
The 20th is our regular board meeting.
20th?
Yeah, and I don't know if, if you told us, go ahead, go forth, write this, I don't think I would have it prepared by the 20th. So if the Board has another way of, might being able to share it before we submit, which the deadline for submission is the 30th.
Would you have some sense by the 20th, an outline or something like that?
Has the application even been released yet? It says it.
I don't know. I think just the intent to apply, it's all on the website there, I'm looking at it right now.
August 15th, it looks like August 15th is when the grant period would open, so we would get our first look at the grant.
You'd have to have the intent to apply by the 13th.
Have we submitted an intent to apply?
I'm waiting for, for you to give me the go-ahead and then tomorrow morning I will.
Okay, okay, because that ends the 13th of August.
Right. So that would, if, if we started it right away on August 15th and it would depend, of course, on the grant writer's ability, I think we could have some ideas by the 20th if, if you would like at that time for me to bring forward what we have at that point.
Yeah, maybe, you know, just a, whatever you have. And then at that point, we could make a decision about whether that's, you know, whether we're good to go with it or if, and then we, if not and we want to see it before it goes out, we'll have to make some other arrangements.
Yeah, I, I think the place to start is with that wishlist there and the requirements of the grant and do the best you can in terms of costing it out. I know there's a question about the availability of the vendors and their ability to give you good quotes. I know with the first grant go-around, the DOJ did accept estimates because vendors across the state were being run ragged trying to, and they said, we can give you a ballpark, and they were accepting of that. Rhonda, go ahead.
So on that, is there, because we have a first round of grants and we have work that we're requesting, I would imagine there's some similar work that we would be requesting for the second round.
Correct.
So is it possible or is it likely that some of these jobs would be very similar in price and estimates?
Yes.
I mean, because, right?
Correct.
You already know that.
That's correct.
That might help save on time?
Yes. There are a few that, for example, creating a secure entrance at Dr. Rosen in Oak Hill, just for an example, that would take a little bit more time, but, but to your point, we do have some numbers already on some of these. Would you agree?
Yes, and even with that one, you know, we're putting secured entrances into Whipwack and King, so between those, we have some ideas on what the costs are. Again, they would be estimates, but not actual budgets.
So you need us to give you direction in terms of move ahead to get a grant writer, move ahead to intend to apply?
Yes, ma'am.
Are all board members okay with both of those things?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Are you Ed?
Cautiously, you know, I, I believe the grant process is going to be the same as last time, so just help me understand a little bit more about why it's necessary to have a grant writer this time as opposed to just follow the same process that we did.
I think what we'll do is I'll ask Kim Shanick to take a look at the grant as soon as it becomes available and determine whether we need that service or not.
Okay. And I definitely want us to go ahead with it, but, you know, I, I do, I do question whether we need to hire somebody to write it because it looks to me to be the same process and, you know, it's just a matter of, do we need a grant writer to cost things out? I don't think that's the, I think that's your job, Mike, right?
Right.
And so if we take a look at that.
We have no one in this building that has ever written a grant?
Oh, yes.
It's Kim Shanick.
Kim Shanick.
Okay, right, well that's.
And she wrote the last one, right?
Correct.
Has she, has she looked at this yet?
It's not available.
This, what's been released so far, yes.
What's been released, yes, okay.
She's, she's at capacity right now with her workload. But if I had to rough guess how many hours Kim Shanick and Chris Coller put into writing that first grant, I would guess 20 plus. They were very thorough and that would include the, Chris had to do all the measurements, so it's actually probably more than that. If it's similar, I think we could, we could accomplish it quickly.
Okay. You might want to call Glenn Rayberg tomorrow and just ask him if, if they anticipate the, you know, being the same process. I mean, it, it looks to me like it's going to be, other than the formula, the funding formula, but if we know that the ceiling is two and a half million dollars, that's, that's a pretty good place to start.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second item is discussion about the American Institute for Research Co-Interpretation, their work and their next steps update.
Thank you. And we did, we did include a PowerPoint here for, for visual purposes that supplements the memo that we shared. So the work we've been doing with the American Institute for Research.
Is your child, thank your microphone?
I didn't think so either, but I was, I was going to use my principal voice.
There you are.
All right. Great. The American Institute for Research has been working with us on our co-interpretation process as well as work with our next steps. And I have Cindy Olson with me, the principal from Washington Middle School, who's been part of the process and part of everything that we've been doing there. So we're going to be sharing a few things as far as, as far as where we're at with, with working with AIR, and sometimes we refer to them as AIR, or AIR, is the acronym for American Institute for Research, who is our turnaround partner in working with Washington. So why are we here? We want to provide the Board with an update on the, the work that we've been doing with AIR regarding the co-interpretation, as well as to explain some of the next steps. And if you remember, the Board had given approval previously for work to be done with AIR up to 300, I'd have to say the amount, $394,000. And so, so this is an update on the research findings that we found based on the collective work done with the community, parents, teachers and administration from Washington Middle School, as well as administration from the district office. So.
Prior to my coming and joining the Green Bay School District, AIR completed a site visit. They spent time at Washington doing classroom observations, teacher, staff and administration interviews, and then just a collection of data. So they asked for documents that contained data that would show a picture of Washington Middle School on paper. They asked for those documents that might help show what Washington looked like.
Looking at grade reports, discipline data, things of that nature. So each of the English Language Arts classrooms, each of the math classrooms were all observed by AIR researchers, looking at, looking for engagement, looking for levels of intellectual activity within, within the lessons. And then they interviewed a random sampling of teachers. Some of the teachers were teachers who have been veteran teachers who were continuing on at Washington, others were people who were taking part in the process, leaving to, to other areas. There were also several staff members that were, were part of that as well, in addition to the, the entire administrative team, because they, they did want to have that opportunity. We also worked really hard to make sure that there was deep community and parent input into the work. That was not necessarily part of the, the initial AIR plan, because there, there was some survey information, of course, that they took from the data collection, our, our school climate and culture information, which comes from parents and students, was part of that as well. But there were three community and parent-focused groups, two main groups in the, one in the evening and one in the, the morning to facilitate availability of time. We were seeking parents and community members with diverse background, so we're seeking a variety of input and we're also looking, again, with flexibility to make sure that we had those, those needs met. We provided childcare, we, there were a number of other things that we had facilitated for those, those meetings and opportunities. They were conducted by an AIR facilitator. It was something that we did not participate in as administrative team because we didn't want to be there and bias people's opinions if they were, if they had the, you know, associate superintendent or principal taking part and listening. We wanted to make sure that, that none of the opinions were, were squelched or, or not listened to. We also had significant support from our district family liaisons. We had outreach to the Somali community, as well as the Latino community, to make sure that we had interviews set up in, in that forum as well. So there were some individuals set up with some of our Latino parents that were able to give their input and perspective as well, so that we're capturing some of the non-English speaking perspective.
So what is co-interpretation? That was a great question that we asked when this process started. It's a collaborative process for school stakeholders to analyze data, develop meaningful key findings and then prioritize those areas for action and support. And through creating a sharing knowledge, is a social process that requires both context and insight from those who best know the organization. So by us meeting together to develop that solid, deep understanding of the data and the information connected to Washington, that's that whole process of what's called a co-interpretation. So multiple representatives coming together to look at the same data, to make decisions or determine what those key findings are.
Oftentimes through, in business, sometimes businesses use the Lean Sigma Six training to, to analyze problems within a corporation and they have what's called a kaizen, where they close down the, the plant and everybody comes together and they dig really deeply into every aspect of what. into every aspect of what can be, what's going well, what's, what are the issues, and there's a deep problem analysis, and that was similar to this process as well. Sorry, I went too far.
Go ahead.
So, we had a number of, wide variety of people involved in, in the co-interpretation. We had a number of classroom teachers, both core teachers, English Language Arts, math, science, social studies. We had special education represented, as well as ELL.
Exploratory.
We had the exploratory teachers represented. We had members from student services, including our student learning, one of our student learning advocates, and our counselor who works with social, emotional learning, members of the administrative team, parents from the, the, from our variety of parents that were involved, community members, as far as, one particular community member that had been part of our other processes, as well as several community partners, a number of district office staff, as well as Dr. Warren and Mr. Dorf as representatives from the board. Go ahead.
And then, with the co-interpretation process, the Washington needs assessment was completed, which applied mixed methods approach to examining school strengths and challenges related to the six key areas of focus defined by the Framework for Systemic Improvement. So, these were the six areas that all of the data was broken down into. So, each of the reports, or the documents that were provided from AIR back to the school, fit those six areas: leadership that drives change, safe and supportive environments, student access and opportunity, continuous improvement and coherence, educator effectiveness, which is the Danielson model that the, the district uses for educator evaluation, and then family and community engagement.
And I do want to note with the grouping of students, I, I was going to address grouping of, of individuals participating, there, there was some pretty significant conversation around whether or not we should include students in the process. But in conversation with AIR, students, generally, the, the level of, of conversation that was taking place related to just a very frank openness, related to the type of instruction, you know, strengths and weaknesses of the school, basically, there, it was, it's an emotional process. There were, there were, you know, many, many points of laughter, and definitely more than one session where, where people were upset and crying. And thinking about middle school-age students, it wasn't something that, that we felt was appropriate. We did explore option of, of possibly having, you know, former Washington students who are maybe East High School students, but their perceptions, having been many years removed from, from their experience, we, in determination with AIR and, and others, we felt that, that inclusion of students in that process wasn't, wasn't prudent at that time to allow for as much openness as possible.
So, you were afraid of student reactions or student honesty, or what?
No, I think it's more the level of not afraid. Okay, so, I think it's important that we always listen to student voice and to the thoughts that they have, but more so with the depth of the data. May, if, if this was, if this approach was done in a high school environment, absolutely more appropriate.
Sure.
But with students who are at a younger developmental age than high school, so 11 to 13 or 14, might not be the perfect place for them to be involved in the process. However, always getting student voice in how to make things better is absolutely a part of the process. So, not to say that they're not going to be involved and provide input, but they weren't involved in this process, in the co-interpretation process.
And there was data that was part of the, the school climate and culture piece, so there was data from students related on their reflections about Washington that was part of the process as well.
And this process was to, kind of like, what are, like, what should we focus on fixing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you for the questions. So, determination of key findings was shared with, was shared with the staff, and if you want to go through that.
Sure. We met on July 24th. To, this is when we, the co-interpretation happened, to look at the information that AIR collected at the end of the 1718 school year. The process started with looking at data, identifying findings, defining key findings, and then on July 25th, we worked to choose the most impactful key findings to move Washington Middle School forward. And those key findings focused around clear direction from administration, addressing the diverse needs of our students, and professional growth opportunities for staff. So, the next step is to bring building leadership team together to look at the key findings and plan how this will be developed into a detailed, time-bound plan that will serve as our school success plan.
Can you go back, please?
Sure.
And when will that happen?
We're meeting on the 16th.
Okay. Will we get a copy of this PowerPoint?
Sure, sure. So, the, the details of the key findings, that's something that we want to make sure that they're, they're ruled out with the building consult, with the building leadership team and with the staff as a whole. And that's part of the reason why we wanted to, to respect the process and allow for those findings to be shared in that forum. So, looking at what that, that includes, thinking about the district level, ensuring that the district-level resources are cohesive and readily available to fully support Washington. The day after, the day after the, the co-interpretation, Cindy was here with AIR personnel, working with a variety of other administrators here, looking at what behavioral supports we have in place and the structures related, looking at our curriculum and instruction and assessment supports that we have in place, and really making sure that the information that was, that was, that came out of those key findings, that we're already beginning to, to develop our plan around it, so that when she works with her building leadership team, that there is a series of resources that can be, that can be ascribed to those needs.
And so, then, at the school level, we'll be collaborating with the building leadership team in using that key finding data to determine sustainable time-bound, short and long-range plan to improve student learning, as well as plans for rollout and monitoring. One of the big things that came out of the co-interpretation, one of the parents asked, is for that, for transparency with what the plan, what our school success plan is, and then, what are our steps to improve instruction at Washington, and then, just overall, the school system as well. And one of the things, I think it was important that was said at the start of the co-interpretation, it's not so much of a turnaround, but a trajectory, because there really are some great things happening at Washington, and some staff, the staff are absolutely dedicated to the work that they're doing. And so, just continuing that, the work that they're doing, and building upon the supports that are already there, changing the things we need to change, and continuing the things that we're doing really well.
So, there will be a full report that is being produced right now by AIR, but the process needed to, to finish the production of that report, it's not available yet for, for the board, but we'll definitely be sharing that with the board and public once, once that is released. But we wanted to provide a summary as part of the work that we're doing with teaching and learning. I also want to express that this is something that, again, we've, we've, we've learned from the processes of working with AIR, not just for the work at Washington, but in a number of different settings. When we've done, we went through extensive training on, on changing our, our interview and hiring practices, and a number of new positions besides just the Washington principalship have been part of that process, including the, the hiring at Edison and other locations, but then also looking at the associate principal position that, that Cindy will be hiring for tomorrow. We have a number of performance tasks and other things that are deeply tied to making sure that we have the leadership team in place that can fully support the work there.
When do you anticipate the report coming out? Because school's starting soon.
Mm-hmm.
From AIR?
I believe within, within the next two weeks, it should be out.
Okay.
So, we have, so, so basically, it's, it's more the polishing of the, the plan and making sure that it's ready for production. There are action steps that we're, we're already able to take the raw recommendations and begin to build from it, but as far as having the completed, polished report that's ready for, for the board and the public, that takes a little bit of time for them to put together, just because of the complexities of what the process. It was a pretty complex process with a lot of rich dialogue, a lot of production of documents within, and so, making sure that we have that in place and that we can roll it out appropriately, that, that took, took a little bit of time. But we want to make sure that we're ready with your building leadership team, and so that the support plans can be in place, so that when the year starts, we're ready, ready to roll. And we've also, at Washington, taken care of a number of different things ahead of time, too, that are sometimes done in August, thinking about the positive behavior and events support work. That was all, sometimes that takes place in August in various schools. All that work was done in June and put in place. We're in a much better place with hiring at Washington this year, as well as the school support, the school success plan that's, that's in place. So, I, I believe we're in a much better place than we have been in previous years, and we'll be able to take this information and apply it immediately. We'll also be able to stay within the budget that was, that was approved by the board for our work with AIR, so we will be at or below the budget that was approved.
One more question on that. So, the rollout of the action plan, will that require more resources?
More resources from at Washington and other areas, sure.
Additional, you mean, what type of resources?
Well, I mean, like, the 394, is that, does that cover?
Yeah, that will cover, that, yes, that covers everything. It includes the work that will be done as far as the leadership supports, the instructional supports, some of the, so the initial proposal from AIR talked about support, instructional coaching in English Language Arts and Math, but we've, based on, on some of the things we've seen within the planning, we want to broaden that, because we'll, we'll have some instructional coaching in, in some of the other areas, too, because we want to make sure that it's a comprehensive plan for the whole school, not just the English Language Arts and Math Department, based on what we saw.
I don't want to speak for you, but maybe reading between the lines with your question there, and if this isn't right, say so, but is there potential that the action plans that come out, the, the school success plan, will have elements in it that call for resources that aren't currently budgeted? Now, I'm not talking about the 394 for AIR, I'm talking about resources that-
Yes.
Okay.
So, let's, right, John? Right. So, let's just say, we determined that there was vastly unmet social, social, emotional needs of our students, and we wanted to increase our social work and counselor time there, based on, on the patterns of what we're seeing and how we can provide mental health supports in schools. If that happened to be part of the work, or part of what, what emerged through this, that would be something that we'd have to pursue and look at through other means. We also want to make sure that the work we do is closely aligned to the work we're doing as a district. So, we're not just recreating a parallel system of support. So, like, if we were thinking about literacy coaching, we don't want to create completely separate literacy coaching, ELA coaching, that's provided by AIR, that doesn't integrate and improve the, the literacy coaching that we already have placed in Washington and other locations. So, we would want to, rather than do that, see what we're doing at, at Washington, look for the best promising practices, and, and see how we might be able to share it in, in our other, other middle schools as well. So, this will be an ongoing process of needs identification and cycles of inquiry, where we try, where we're trying something new based on, on the recommendations and data at the time, and then digging into that very carefully to see what is the next step. There may be steps that require additional resources, but it wouldn't be something that we would be, I don't look at that as something we'd be contracting out with, with AIR. This would be something that we'd be looking at for other internal identification of resources.
Re-allocation current resources, or, okay. Go ahead, Rhonda.
So, a while back, we had discussed that there wasn't really a contract, because we weren't really sure what we were going to have them do. Are we closer to that now?
Yes.
And when will we anticipate seeing that?
Well, the, the board has already approved the funding for the work, so the contract would be something that would be negotiating with AIR based on, on the specific needs outlined by the, the co-interpretation.
So, that will be another proposal, right, put forward for another contract, or, because the contract was for the 394?
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Right.
And is that, are we supposed to go up until then? Is it, we'll go until we hit 394, or is it-
I don't see a succeeding 394 for this school year. So, that's been, it's, so basically, now it's just negotiating the details of the contract with, with AIR. We already have a contract, you know, contract proposal, and we just need to make sure that that's shaped slightly based on, on what we see as the, the needs and the finding of the co-interpretation done by the community and, and staff and administration.
And is that, I mean, is that a public document? Is that something that people have access to?
The contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
If they do an open records request, they can have it?
Yes. I don't even know if that we'd need an open records request unless there's proprietary information based on AIR. There might be some, some things within there that are copyrighted, but I don't see why it would be a problem to have that contract. Sherrod?
As a follow-up, too, I know, John, within that discussion, and I know within the proposal, it talks very specifically about bringing in additional principals as part of the, of the professional development.
Yes.
Are you anticipating that's still part of the professional development, that we would, you know, perhaps feeder schools feeding into Washington to make sure that there's nice transition, but also understand each other's work, so it's more seamless?
Definitely. As we talked about, Washington and middle school in general is one segment of a flowing river, and we want to make sure that the tributaries are, are learning from what we're doing, and making sure that we're, we're putting in place the promising practices at the elementary levels, and thinking about how the, the through line into high school and how we're supporting high schools as well. We've also had Dr. Judy Wiegand and, Ann Barsh and Andrea Lanwar are going to be part of, of the work that we're doing with AIR, so that when we're learning this process, we can consider how we can apply it in other schools and other levels. Thinking about some of our work at the secondary level, there's some problem analysis that we want to do as we're moving forward. I could see us taking on something similar, where we're, we're working through and looking at what are some of the root cause issues to, to some of our struggles in, in other schools, and applying the methodology there, too. But all that would fall within the contract.
Would you go through, again, the timeline for developing and getting out the, the school success plan?
Yeah. So, we are meeting on August 16th with the building leadership team, and considering it's the school success plan for the 1819 school year, it needs to be, at least the first 100 days of the school year need to be fleshed out and figured out what we're doing and working on, so that we know the direction that we're heading as a school, connected to using our professional learning time in our CLTs, connected back to the key findings, so that there's that cohesion of topics, that we're not just spitballing things, trying to guess what we need to be working on, but that there's some real focus. And then, reviewing that plan those 100 days, and then building on that another 100 days and another 100 days. And really, a school success plan, it's not one year's work, but it's long-term work with an ultimate goal in the end, and then, how do you work towards that goal through the back planning that we'll be doing?
How will we make sure that the, the people who are going to be doing the heavy lifting, I'm talking about the teachers, the staff at, at Washington, have the first look at that? Because really, I think out of respect, they need the first look at that.
At the school, of the school success plan?
Yep.
Yeah, they're helping build it. So, they're-
That's a, that's a given, well, that's not all the staff, though.
No, the, it's the building leadership team.
Building leadership team, okay.
Yep, which is all of the depart, it's the department chairs, the literacy coach.
I get that, but I, I'm saying, the entire staff, when, when will they have access to that?
In August, when we come back to school, August 27th. It'll, I send out a weekly communication to my staff as well. Once we've started putting it together of what that looks like, they would, I would be linking it to them via email. And then, in August, we come back the 27th, and I, I can't remember the exact dates that we meet as a whole staff, but we would be going over what that would look like for them as well.
I guess we're, I'm not making myself clear. I want to make sure that all the teachers, the staff have access to, that they view that at least simultaneously, if not before it's made public. I, I, you know, I think out of respect to those people who are doing the work, they need to have their eyes on it first.
Right. And I think that's, it's very much appreciated, because this is a deep and collaborative process that, that is going to require the relationships of trust and respect. And if we were putting out, "These are our three goals, and these are the 10 things we're going to do around these three goals," to the public before the- we're going to do around these three goals to the public, before the staff had an opportunity to really dig in and understand the what, the why, and the how, that that wouldn't be respecting the staff. So we appreciate that you're thinking about that, that critical aspect of moving forward.
Okay. One other question that I have, and see if others have any. As we looked at the PowerPoint, I think a lot of folks would look at that and say, those processes look very, very familiar. It's the same kinds of things that people have done in the past. I do notice, I did myself note that that mixed, you call it mixed method, methodology was a little bit different than what I had seen before. But what's dramatically different about this process compared to what people are used to doing? Can you point to anything?
So for me, as a building leader, having so many different facets of the school system and community system coming together to look at data to develop a goal, or goals or key findings, that there's really so many different perspectives being brought in. Often that work is done solely with school staff. So bringing in those outside, that outside lens, and then the parent lens as well. Parents are often not involved in looking at school data to determine what key findings or what the goals should be for a school, but it's absolutely, makes sense that they are. So those, to me, were the big differences with AIR's involvement.
Go ahead, please.
I think one of the really important parts of this as well, and we were part of the co-interpretation process, to have central office administrators in the room to hear from the practitioners who are delivering in the trenches was really, really critical. And to also then to be able to be put, and called out and said, okay, then what are you going to do? And be very specific about how we can better support. It was a really important dialogue, and I've said it, and I believe we need to do that in every single school that we serve. Because it really, we hear about the disconnects, but this was really, really, really something that we, I think, can really benefit from even more. I mean, I think there were some things that were said that we needed to hear, but equally as important, the resolution and commitment, I think, they needed to see that we were there with them, because often we're trying to fix things and address things, but people don't always recognize that's happening, too. So it was a very important conversation, I thought, and to have Board of Education members there, that's not happening at school plans either, to really, you know, as the governance and who are responsible at the end of the day to approve resource, I thought was really critical.
I think it would be very important when we, when we get this information out, if it's part of that school success plan, or some adjunct to it, that the things that you just spoke of are put out there for folks to see. I think it's really critical. John, did you want to say anything more to that question today?
Yeah, if, actually, I think Dr. Langenfeld answered it really well. I think, too, the depth of the problem analysis was deeper than we usually go, or what happens quite often when we have an issue in a school, we do a little bit of research and we look into it, and we go a lot based on our past experiences and some hunches and a few, maybe a few elements of input. But to really go as deeply as possible so that you're getting more precise with the root cause issue allows us to focus, to focus with laser-like, laser-like ability and laser-like focus on the root causes of the issue, rather than just saying, student engagement, we can get into maybe types of discourse, types of conversation and dialogue that happen in the classroom, and what do we do around that, as opposed to just saying, let's focus on school engagement. So the depth of program, or problem analysis was really helpful, as well as the inclusive spirit that made it feel that it wasn't just a small team of people going off and deciding what the school goals were, it was, it was a cross-section of those stakeholders who are part of the Washington community. Brenda?
What would you say is the difference from this as opposed to Fort Howard?
Well, I wasn't part of the Fort Howard process, but we did look at, I mean, I've looked at the work that was done there. I'd say that there were some similarities as far as the type of, type of problem analysis. Most organizations that go around and do turnaround work, even though turnaround isn't my favorite word, because it's more trajectory-changing than turnaround. The depth of work that was done around interviewing multiple stakeholders, I think, was really important at Washington. I don't know that Fort Howard went to that depth at that time. Making sure that we're including cross-sections of the community with diverse language speakers, diverse community partners, things of that nature was something that was, I haven't seen that done to that level before. I wasn't part of the Fort Howard experience, so I can't say whether or not it was part of the experience there.
Is there anyone that can, that's here, that was part of that?
Terry Williams, maybe? Do you want to come up, Terry? This is Terry Williams, Executive Director.
Good evening. When we worked with WestEd, they did do some interviewing of parents. There were meetings held at the school. School board members were also invited to attend several of those, and they did also do a similar activity with the staff in interviewing and observing in classrooms called a four-dimensional needs assessment and study, and those results then were shared. Meetings were held with the whole staff, as well as the parent groups and the Board of Education as well at that time.
Did you have a diverse cross-section of parents and community members involved?
I believe so. The turnout was, I know that the school principal was very pleased with the number of turnout. We had translators available, and for the size of the school, I felt that the response was representative of the parents, and the feedback that was received was also very positive.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
If I could just circle back to Brenda's question before, I want to make sure that my response was clear, that there's a question about whether the contract was a public record, and it is, it's a public record. Whether it's subject to release in its entirety would depend on any number of factors. It sounded like there's still some negotiation going on with maybe subsequent services and subsequent contractual components that may be ongoing, so there may be some portions that would be withheld that have to be evaluated. So I just want to make it clear that it is a public record, but may be not necessarily subject to release in its entirety right now, today.
Thanks.
Cindy, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Cindy for the great job she's doing in supporting Washington and working incredibly hard this summer in hiring and all the turnaround work we're doing. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a few more discussion items, discussion, public comment. First one is Advanced Placement Statistics Resources.
I have Mr. Mike Fries joining me.
Good evening, everyone. I am here representing the Teaching Learning Department, as well as Cindy Cantwell tonight, who can't be, cannot be present. I don't know, can everybody hear me okay?
Don't know if the mics are on.
Well, is that what we're...
Testing.
How will you know if I'm, oh, there we go. I was going to start singing. So I'd like to thank you for taking time to consider our recommendation for Advanced Placement Statistics Resources. Cindy wanted to make sure that we also thank the team that she worked with in this process. She made reference to them earlier this summer when she brought forward the curriculum resource, or, excuse me, the curriculum documents for your consideration. At that point, we let you know that we would be engaging then in a resource exploration process. The team was very eager to get involved this summer in looking for those as soon as possible, based on what they learned through the curriculum development process. They've done that, and so they have reviewed various resources. The current resources have a 2007 copyright date, so we're ready for some new ones. The proposal that you see tonight suggests a class set of books, as well as online access for all students, and the recommended resource is called Stats: Modeling the World, 2019 AP Edition from Pearson Education. That is the recommendation. It's one of the College Board Advanced Placement supported texts. They found that the readability, layout, and content of this resource to be very accessible as well as engaging for students. This was an important feature to the team as they look to grow enrollment in this course in future years, because it is a very relevant course for students' college and career readiness. Other features of the recommendation include e-text access, online tutorials, and practice problems with feedback, as well as embedded statistical software and data sets. So at this time, I thank you for your consideration, and be willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Brenda?
Are we continuing the practice of having textbooks that students can check out to take home, if that's their preferred way of going, getting through their textbook?
I certainly would not, we would not prohibit that, that is, we always build in about a 10% extra order relative for extra checkout purposes and things of that nature as well.
I knew we were, but I just want to make sure we're continuing to do that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Brenda?
The conversations that were had with the interest city student council on AP classes and all of that, that was happening, this is actually more of a question for that man right there. Yeah, was that ever resolved? And I know they had some concerns about AP and with college courses and the level of, the amount of classes in order to be accepted. I mean, there was definitely a lot of conversation around that. When you're hearing this, do you have any other? Well, I mean, there was, I'd been to most of those meetings, and there was a lot of conversation about, they were concerned about how many they were taking and how many tests they were taking. You shaking your head? Yeah, so you remember any of that?
I remember some of the conversation, particularly around the cost, sometimes with AP testing, and what could families do if they had multiple students taking multiple AP classes, and how that can have significant impact on a family if suddenly they were paying, you know, multiple hundreds of dollars for AP testing for their student. And so that is something that we did explore with our high school principals, to make sure that each of our high schools does have a fund that can be accessed and used in cases of hardship, so that there are, there are funds available for that. That was one aspect of the conversation. I think that it was probably more nuanced than that, but that was, that was one piece that I recall from our previous conversations, and some of the follow-up that we did at that point. But I think the number of AP classes, and you'll see in some future reports, that we have a better than, better than state average on many of our AP courses and the number of dual-credit attainment. So I think that there's a positive trending in the number of students being able to take AP classes, as well as the offerings we have out there. Things like AP Human Geography is something that not all districts offer, and so we're trying to offer more AP offerings, but also make sure that we're listening to our students and our families, particularly thinking about equity issues like funding for the cost of those exams, and making sure that each school has something in place to cover and support that. Of course, there is always more work we can do, because sometimes people might not ask for that assistance if they don't know about it, so making sure that that's clearly communicated to families, so that they know that that resource is there if the need is there. Also, students do have the ability to take an AP class without taking the exam as well, so that's another option.
Do you feel that these resources will help with what you just, like what you just said, as far as that goes?
Yes, I think so. Again, it won't help every situation, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing as much as possible to make sure that those communications are clear, and thinking about some of the barriers that may exist, particularly for families who might be new to the country or things of that nature, and having their sons and daughters taking those higher-level classes. We want to make sure that those pieces are in place to have that outreach if there is an economic hardship. But that's something that our social work teams and our administration focuses on, as well as our EL services and others. Noah?
So, I appreciate that, and I have to jump on my little rant I go on every time that this topic gets brought up. You still can't get an AP statistics class on the West Side, because now Southwest doesn't offer it. And I know plenty of, and I know that there are, not plenty of comparatively, but I know there are kids who would like to take it, now they can't, and they don't have transportation to get to the East Side, because the public transportation just, takes more than one class period to do that. So you have to, you have to get like a huge block missing from your schedule. So, and that's not only, I mean, AP statistics either, there are a lot of AP classes offered at Southwest that aren't offered at West, because now there's IB there. And when IB was first introduced to West, I remember, I had nothing better to do, so of course I go look through all these old documents about it. People were talking about how the AP program wouldn't be damaged at West by the introduction of IB, and they couldn't coexist. Sort of, yeah, they coexist, but now there are, I mean, the AP classes and the AP program has been decimated at West, and probably pretty close to decimated, actually. I mean, a lot of AP classes wiped out that you can't get, so you have to travel to Southwest to get them. But a lot of kids can't travel to Southwest, they don't have a car. Public transportation means you have to take how much out of their schedule. So I think that is something to look into, AP class availability at West, because it's getting better, for sure. I mean, I took an AP Human Geography class last year, and I know a lot of districts don't have that. So I was glad to see that. And I think, I mean, I think that there is certainly work being done to accomplish that. But right now, AP availability at West is not good. So I hope that's something that could be looked into in the future.
Appreciate the feedback.
Is there a reason? Or is that, I mean, is that accurate, what he's saying?
Well, of course.
I think this actually is not on our agenda, this particular conversation, because we're just approving resources, is that right? Are we okay?
Over the, this Advanced Placement Statistics, is this discussion about things to look into, or just allocation of funds, is that?
Yeah, I mean, this is just approving the resource, but I'm, and I, I mean, I think it's an important conversation, but I wonder if we should bring it back when we have actual numbers and can start to answer specific questions about AP access, things like that. So, although I would say, I'm approving funding for AP resources for who exactly?
For the projected enrollment of students in our AP statistics courses, which will be running for next year. The courses that are running appear to be at Preble and at East High School.
So these resources are for the East Side?
They're for the students that, basically, a course runs if there are enough students to, to run the course. We tend to run some of the courses that are considered capstone courses, like AP courses, Project Lead the Way courses and others, sometimes will run at a significantly lower ratio of students to teacher, but there still has to be enough students to run the course. We wouldn't typically run a course with two or three or five students, and so that's where the issue lies, is that some courses that students have put in their request for can't run, because there might be, you know, five or six students that want it, as opposed to 10, 15, 20, that would make it more viable. So in that case, we try to cluster the AP offerings at one of the sites and offer transportation.
You're being asked to approve the course resources for an approved course in the district, and then from year to year, based on enrollment numbers, the order for the number of approved resources will be made. So for this year, it will be the estimated number, and then as signup happens again, it would be for whatever the number would be for the next time around.
Okay, but, I mean, the topic is AP resources. We're approving resources for AP.
Yep.
And to Noah's point about the classes that aren't necessarily realistic for kids on the West Side, when can we have that conversation? the West Side, when can we have that conversation?
I think I would look to the Board President to call on the Board and decide what action the Board would like us to take related to offering update on AP offerings. We could do something related to IB as well, but then that would be something that we'd be considering, that we'd put in the queue of progress monitoring reports. If that would be something that would be recommended by the Board, that would be something we'd be glad to look into.
Well, I think it's, because I think it's probably, to some people, this is a kind of a, oh, I didn't realize that there aren't offerings at every school, and that, yeah, there is possibly some transportation issues. I can think of for quite a few kids, that could be realistic. I would love to have that conversation whenever we can.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's not a rush since school starts in three weeks. I mean, why don't we talk about when it would make sense to bring that forward? We have our monitoring report meeting next week? Is it next week?
And can I clarify? The reason why I think it's important is because I frequently, I'm a Franklin parent, and I do have questions that are put forward and I'm asked from people about AP and IB, and I want to be educated. I did not know that West doesn't have a program.
It exists.
They have an AICD program.
Then what did you, but that's not what you said.
It's quite limited compared to other schools.
Okay, so, okay, well, then that's probably essentially almost the same thing. So there's not a lot of opportunity unless you have transportation, is what you said.
And the courses are offered, all the courses are offered at West. It depends upon student registration enrollment as to whether it runs or not. So in any given year, different sets of courses may or may not run.
Yes, West is listed as an available school for AP Statistics in both our Academic and Career Planning Guide, as well as in our coursebook.
But then to that point, I think we do need to take a look at either remote opportunities or the transportation issue, now that we have our fleet of vans, if there's something that we can do to make that more.
So, we.
I don't know if it still occurs, but I know that there have been alternating years for some of the courses that don't have a high interest, but you want to make sure you get them, and so they're offered on alternating years so that a student is able to get them. You might not be able to get it this year, but you can get it next year, so, yeah. And I don't know if that's still going on. I assume it is.
Be based on, you know, making sure that we have the appropriate conversations during staffing time, when we're having conversations with, you know, the West student requests, and then, you know, having a handle on how many students requested this, and are they seniors, are they juniors, are they sophomores? If we let them know we can run it the year after, it's part of the communicating across a large district to make sure that that does occur, so.
So do you believe it's limited because parents aren't aware, students aren't aware?
There's a few more students.
I think it's partly that it's by far the smallest high school. And then, there is, there is some, there is an aspect to the IB offerings and the AP offerings being somewhat competitive, because some students are heavy, some of the students who are taking advanced-level coursework are in the IB program, which might reduce the number of kids that are also wanting an AP course, because they might be loading more heavily with IB. It isn't to say that you can't take both, but sometimes there's conflict there.
One of the things that might be helpful, Rhonda, is, you know, if we had maybe a conversation about the academic planning conferences that are held at all the high schools, where they start as freshmen, and the counselors, the school counselors will talk to the students about what their plans are and projecting out, and if we know that people have interest in some of these courses that are not as high in demand, they can chart that out for them. That, you know, not a guarantee that every single gap is filled, but they do plan that out, and they have that opportunity. So, again, if it's a course that I know that at my high school is only offered every other year, then I need to make sure that my guidance counselors are having those conversations with, sorry, counselors, school counselors are having those conversations with the students during the planning conferences.
So, okay, just so I'm totally clear. So the limited is a result of not as many students, but you mentioned transportation issues. So what do you mean by that?
I mean, there exists a program for that, and I would not be, I wouldn't be able to give you too much information on it, because I don't know enough about it that I could, you know, give a dissertation on it. But there are some kids, as far as public transportation, which is now free, and that's a good program, of course, but some kids don't have their own vehicles, they don't have their own transportation, so they would have to rely on public transportation, which takes a while. I'm, sorry, I'm string from the, I don't think I'm violating meeting laws too badly yet.
A little.
But, yeah. But there are some kids who can't get to those classes when they're offered at other schools, which, that's a reality in a big district. That will happen. It's unfortunate it does happen, but I think it happens more at West. And as far as course availability, I don't think it helps to have counselors who don't tell you that AP Statistics is available, so you have to go through the catalog yourself to bring it to them. And I think that, that problems such as that, because a lot of kids don't have the time or the energy that I have to go looking through course catalogs to try to dig stuff out that's buried deep in district documents. A lot of kids can't, they can't do that. They don't have the time for it. They have jobs, they have stuff to do. So not everybody has the same opportunity to say to their counselor, no, here it is. This class exists. Sign me up for it. You know, so things such as that, and other things limiting students from signing up for specific AP classes, as well as awareness about those classes and whether or not they actually are offered or whether or not they run, which are different issues at different schools, should probably be addressed in a future meeting.
One additional point I would make is that with the IB program being a, with the DP part being a two-year program, that the math courses are two years in length, and so when you offer a two-year sequence in a course, obviously, that in the confines of your seven-period day, or what have you, plus lunch, you do have to make choices as a school district. So by choosing to invest in the high-quality international baccalaureate program, you are choosing to run certain courses that require a two-year commitment, and so that's one aspect. We also try to mitigate that in both the transportation aspect by offering access to online courses and providing students with access to devices, the opportunity to run courses in a distant standpoint. So dialing in live via Google Hangout, what have you, is something that's a possibility. So we don't want the fact that something may or may not be run face-to-face in a school to be a barrier to accessing the content that is part of someone's academic or career plan.
We also want to make sure from an equity perspective that we consider the parents who might have less opportunity or access or opportunity to advocate and seek those opportunities out. Sometimes with AP classes, we tend to have students taking those courses who might be, you know, eventually second-generation college students as opposed to first. Quite often, they are first-language English. Quite often, they're middle-class or above, and we want to make sure that the advanced course offerings have application and access to all. I've been in meetings where, not particularly here, but in other areas where I've heard counselors kind of scare people off from taking AP classes in certain areas, not in this district. But I think it's important that we help people see AP as an opportunity for all, rather than just an opportunity for the select few. So I think that Noah brought up some good points there, as far as we shouldn't have to dig deep to find the course.
We've kind of gotten into the weeds on this. Good conversation about it, and I think there are more to come on the topic, but in terms of what we have on the agenda, we are looking at moving forward then the approval of the adoption of these resources. So unless there's other questions, we can move on to the next one, English Learner A, B, and C Resources.
I'm Julie Seifelt. I'm the Director of the English Learner Programs, and I'd like to introduce you to Jesse Wetstein, who is the Secondary English Learner Curriculum Coordinator. So we're here tonight to talk about three items. So we're going to start first with the ABC Resources. So just to let you know, the English Language Arts ABC Courses, they're English Language Arts Courses, they're double-block courses, so they're a two-hour course, and they are for our secondary students who are very new to the country, who are in the early stages of developing their English. So we have about 1,700 English learners who are grades six through 12 in this district, and next school year, we have 250 students who are enrolled in these programs. So it's about 15% of the total secondary population. So we have, a few years ago, we did develop the Content Essential Documents, and we have, for two years now, been looking for resources. And there's not a lot out there for secondary English learners who are new to the country. So we have called various districts across Wisconsin, Minnesota, Florida. We have done extensive research. So we are very excited tonight to bring forward resources for these class, for these very needy and energetic students. So I'm going to let Jesse explain the process.
Hi, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the team that I've worked with over the past three years. They've been working with me diligently to look for resources and help create the CEDs and meet the unique needs of our students. After an extensive search for resources, including requests for information with Jake Elberston from Procurement, our team of EL teachers highly recommends ILLIT ELL by Pearson, which meets all of our resource expectations, including engaging text, media, and activities. Following a product demonstration by Pearson and our recommendation from all of our teachers, I completed a site review in Illinois to observe and discuss the program with their district administration in order to gather more insight and information. As a result of this careful review, the English Learner Department supports the recommendation for ILLIT ELL by Pearson for our ELL ABC Courses.
Okay, and we'll move that forward.
Well, you get to look at our smiling faces some more.
Now you're going to talk to us about EL Intensive Mathematics 1, 2, and 3.
Correct.
All right.
So our English Learner Intensive Math 1, 2, 3 Courses are also for our new-to-the-country students, but it's even a smaller amount of students. So when I came before the Board in May, I talked about our secondary students we were having here in Green Bay that are called SLIF, Students with Limited or Interrupted Formal Education. So as part of our enrollment process, when an English learner does enroll, we do sit down with the family and the students, and we talk about their educational experiences. You know, what did your kindergarten look like, first grade, second grade, third grade? And then we've been asking, well, how long was your school? Because we have been getting students from refugee camps who have said, oh, I went to school in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and through various assessments and observations of the students, we were noticing some lower skills, and when we really dug in, school was an hour a day, and that's what they were calling school. So we were seeing gaps. So the Content Essential Documents for these intensive math classes, these are also two-hour courses. Next year, we have 60 students enrolled in these courses, and they are at our high schools that have programs for our newly arrived students. So these courses run at Southwest, East, Preble, Washington, Lombardi, and Edison. So about 4% of our total secondary students would be enrolled in these classes. So Jesse, once again, will talk about the process of creating the Content Essential Documents.
So I had the great pleasure of working with a team of teachers this summer and the Secondary Math Curriculum Coordinator to create CEDs for these courses. There are three courses broken down, EL Intensive Mathematics 1, 2, and 3 Enrichment. Like Julie said, they are both double-block courses, so that we can try to accelerate at least two years of math in one year. So the EL Intensive Mathematics 1 Course will focus on the standards K through 2. EL Intensive Math 2 is standards 3 through 5, and EL Intensive Mathematics 3 is standards 6 through 8 in an accelerated capacity. These are intended to be fluid courses, so that the students are progressing and changing courses as they are meeting the standards and are able to get out into the mainstream content classes as soon as possible. All of our CEDs were based on the Common Core State Standards for Mathematics. We used Algebra Readiness Standards and College and Career Ready Standards. We also align them to the WIDA ELD standards as well.
Questions?
I have a question. Are math teachers teaching these courses?
Correct. At the high school, in order to get math certification, you do need to have a math certification, the 400 certification, and an ESL certification. At the middle school level, you just need, because it's not algebra yet, you need to be able to teach mathematics. So somebody with a 400 could teach these, or if you have a general 1/8 certification.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move that forward. And our last item is John Dewey Academy of Learning Charter Addendum. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have more?
Yeah, there's a third part. It's resources. It was kind of combined into one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm sorry. I just, I don't want to leave.
Well, you're.
No, I was like, I'm being pushed away.
I was looking at it both together there.
Yep, they were together, but there is another document requesting resources for these courses. So past practice has always been, the district's adopted math resources are used in these intensive classes. So as you know, the Board has just approved Bridges Math for K-5, so we will be recommending something called Bridges Intervention for the Courses 1 and 2. And then our middle schools use Go Math, and we already use Go Math in grade-level EL courses. So that is the recommended resource for Math Course 3. Did I say everything that you were going to say? Oh. Now I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And we will move that forward as well.
These resources, as well as the resources outlined in the Statistics, AP Statistics Proposal, those have been allocated within our 2018-19 budget, so if approved by the Board, they would be something that we plan for.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, in the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for your hard work.
Okay, now we're going on to John Dewey Academy of Learning.
I'm joined tonight by Jen Agamite, leader of Charter Schools, and we had John Dewey. At the last Board meeting, the Board approved for expanding John Dewey to reach the sixth and seventh grade, as well as eighth through 12. In addition, some of the language in the contract needed to change, because John Dewey and the new Charter School will be sharing a governance board. So general, talk us through this.
Good evening. So I'm here to present the suggested changes to the contract, and you should have access to that on NEV2. The first change under number 1, Section 2A for the Educational Program, is just simple language change to include sixth grade instead of the original eighth grade. The next change on the following page, under the Governance Council, is in numbers 1, 2, and 3, is to change some of the language to align, like Ms. Byer said, with the new Charter School contract. So some of the wording, like J.D.O.L. shall versus J.D.O.L. will. But we also added in number 2C, the importance of diversity in representation of our governance board, and that was following Board Member Recommendation at our last conversation. Moving on then to page 3, section, number 3, section regarding admissions, also just some language change there to include any fifth-grade student entering the sixth grade in the year in which the application is being requested. in the year in which the application is being requested. And then number 4 also outlines a few items that are required by the DPI in order for us to expand our charter. So they wanted more specifics regarding the property of the charter school and what will happen to that property in the event of our school closing. And they also requested on page 4, some language about that as well. So number 5 talks about the revocation of the contract, if there is insufficient enrollment, insufficient funding, and also identifying that we will create closing policies and And then number 6 includes language regarding if we have to make notice, who we provide that notice to. And it provides those details there in A through E. And those are the changes that have been suggested for this contract.
The plan will also be to bring the charter school contract for New School of Innovation to the board in October. So they're currently working on that to share with you.
Rhonda?
Do you have 6th and 7th graders signed up for next year, or will this occur the following year?
This will occur for this year. So the plan is to add 6th and 7th grade students online first semester.
Yeah, that's right.
And then adding them second semester. I have reached out to some families. So far this year, we've had, we have 13 6th and 7th grade students who have open enrolled out to a virtual district. Last year, we had 25 for the entire year. So it's definitely picking up.
Rhonda?
Who is the ideal student for this program?
For John Dewey or for online?
Either one. I've been asked that, and I don't really know how to answer it.
I think that's a great question. John Dewey is a great school for students who are independent and motivated learners who are looking for something a little different than the great options we have in the traditional setting. These students like to take charge of their learning and design something a little bit more personalized that fits their academic and professional goals. Does that help?
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes teaching and learning.
Great, thank you. Let's go to operational support, and someone will have to facilitate that in Andrew's absence. Katie, you want to do that?
Let me get to that.
We have nothing on business and finance, human resources, and employment update.
Jean?
I provided you with a update about staffing, which I listened to in August of the year. And this year, we have, right now, 80 open positions. This includes all the open positions we have in the entire district. It compares to 104 last year at this very same time. So we're 24 fewer open positions. That is in part to the hard work we are doing, and our supervisors are doing it filling positions, but also we got an earlier start this year.
Can you pull a microphone?
Oh, certainly. We have 180 open positions, and that compares to the 104 we had last year at this time. Of those positions, we have 27 classroom positions that are still open. Some of those are part-time, and 10 of them are in the secondary regular ed areas, and then the balance are in special education, bilingual ELL, and regular ed, and one only in regular education elementary. So we do anticipate being able to fill these, especially the classroom positions, by the start of school.
And some are currently underway and processed and interviewing, is that accurate?
If we have the background check started with an offer, you know, background check started, they are not on this list. These are, these are the positions where there's nothing that has yet been sent to Human Resources, and we literally updated it this afternoon so that anybody that was began in process is off of this list now. So as you can see, there's a column, two more columns. So when the board meets again, I'll be providing an update at the regular board meeting in August. And then once school opens in September, I'll let you know how everything came about. This is the second year we're doing it this way, to get regular updates.
Any questions or comments? Rhonda? Is there any plan to change the process to recruit substitute teachers this coming school year?
We've been pretty successful last year to recruit substitute teachers. We already started a substitute, we had a substitute interview group this past week, and we interviewed, I think, about six or seven substitute teachers, and there are offers on the way. And so we're going to continue to have, invite our principals in to interview subs throughout the year.
So we didn't have a sub shortage last year?
We will always have a sub shortage. We will never be able to fill absolutely every sub vacancy that we have, because sometimes our vacancies are in the hundreds. And we simply will not be able to fill every vacancy with a sub. But we have over 300 substitute teachers on staff, and we will continue to maintain about that number. There just are not enough subs to go around. We increased the rate of pay for subs, and that helped a great deal. But when you have over 100 to 150 vacancies in a given day, sometimes more than that, we may not have the number of subs. Especially when somebody calls in sick at the last minute or puts it in. You know, if they're putting their absence in at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock in the morning, many of our subs have taken jobs in our district or other districts. If the jobs are put in, in the evening, they're usually filled.
Do you have, do you track that, how many, how many times we actually can't fill the spot?
Yes. The system that we use, which is absence management, actually will show you filled numbers and percentages versus unfilled. It has a little wheel on the top of the page that shows that. So every day, we can look and see what happened. Now, if the position was filled by an internal person covering, then that doesn't show that. And we do fill a number of our vacancies with people within the building. They'll fill in for a class. And we have a rotation where we pull non-classroom teachers into the, into the classrooms through rotation.
I'm sure you know that's not ideal.
No, it isn't.
And I hear about that a lot from teachers. So again, is there any other approach to maybe improving the number of spots that don't have to be filled by people in the building? I heard about it a lot.
Yes, yes, we do too, we do too. It is, it was the number-one thing that we worked on this past year, to hire just as many subs as we can. And, and we did. I mean, we were really, really hiring. I think some of the approach, frankly, is to work on the utilization of subs and perhaps do some professional development outside of the school day and pay teachers for that rather than pulling them out of the classroom during the school day and then having a sub fill in. Some of it is working with some of the people who call in sick a lot. Chronic absenteeism for some staff, that's not the majority of staff, but working on some of that is important. When you see the patterns of calling in ill on Friday, you know, that kind of thing we have to look at.
We really review that on a regular basis as part of thriving workforce in the staffing positions, because we feel it's really critical. Pulled off numbers of times for professional learning that we were going to have pullouts because we could see that it was going to be problematic. Jean has provided us with lists of, so we can see when, I mean, there are certain circumstances that happen that we know we're going to be short in subs. Because everyone is competing for the same subs at the same time. There are things in the calendar that you can see are coming, that you can expect that we're going to have people out a fair number. So I think, you know, you can see it in patterns sometimes. We've pulled out as much as we can, and correct me if I'm wrong, John and Vicky, Mondays and Fridays in particular seem problematic. Fridays seem to be a day where people sometimes call in at the last moment, really trying to, I mean, but it's monitored. It's not like we're not paying attention and trying to improve. And part of that is, is that redeployment piece from central office that we started in the middle of the year, and we tried some other things, I can't recall. There was one more thing, if I remember right. I can't, it's not there in my brain, to try to address it.
Rhonda?
Then, I know last year, we were working with principals to try to improve their onboarding of their subs when they come in each day. Is that something that we're continuing to monitor, and has that helped, do you think?
I think that has helped. I, actually, to be honest with you, I think the biggest help was bringing our rate to $150 a day. I've been interviewing subs, and many times I've heard, you pay the best, we're going to work here. And it really make, made a big difference. And we encourage people to take the CISA class. We've referred people to that one-day class, and so we're hiring a lot more people who don't have a background in teaching. But they're interested enough in teaching to take the class, to see if education is something that they're interested in. And I would say the majority of the people who take that class and become subs are, are kind of trying to figure out if teaching is going to be the career for them. And some do go back and get their credentials.
Rhonda? Can it be possible that if that is a case where there are significant amount of people that aren't there calling in, that the building principal doesn't leave for a meeting to come here? Because that has happened, and I can't imagine that's ideal either.
Right. That would be something that would be, teaching and learning would discuss.
Making sure that there's a, making sure that there's a highly qualified person in front of the students is our first objective. We can't run a good classroom, and we can't ensure that there's high-quality instruction if, if a teacher isn't there, or a guest teacher is one of our substitutes. But of course, as a building principal, the priority is making sure that those classes are covered if, if that is not the case. We did put together the sub-rotation list with, with district personnel as well. So our teaching and learning staff and student services and others have a rotation where they are rotating in. And then if there's a hotspot identified, that we've gotten pretty good at, identifying based on rates of illness and things of that nature, if we think that there's going to be something, it's going to be a hot day, like a Friday, for instance, in the middle of flu season, when teachers, and it's not that teachers are purposely taking off a Friday because of wanting a three-day weekend. It's quite often that they've tried to get through the week, and they're finally at a point of just, oh, I can't do it, I need to, I need to take a day off and tie it in with the weekend and get better. But, but we want to make sure that we have additional coverage on those days, so we have that rotation set up with, with staff. We don't purposely pull people out of buildings for unnecessary meeting times. We want to make sure that they, they are in class with their, and in their schools as needed.
And I couldn't agree with you more, but this past year, there were 11 uncovered positions at a elementary school, and there, there was no building principal there, they came here for meetings. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm saying this, I'm letting this voice be heard, that that's not happening.
I think I probably want to learn more about the circumstance so that we could investigate.
I had actually reached out to Andrea, and I, we had talked, I've talked to her about it, but I just want to state it out there again, that that was not a good thing.
The reason why I want to look into it is not to dispute whether it happened or not, just so that they, if there's miscommunication to the principal around importance of the meeting or whatnot, we want to make sure that they know that children's safety and education always, always comes first, and that if there's a need for them to cover in a tight situation, that that's reiterated. We'll make sure that at our district retreat, we go over that as well, as well as the information that Dr. Warren shared. Part of our efforts are making sure that subs feel welcomed when they come to the classrooms and come to the schools. If you're, if you're a guest teacher, and we like to refer to them as guest teachers rather than, than subs, if you're a guest teacher, it's good for you to know not only what are the protocols for where to send kids, who are the kids on the seating chart, but who's a partner, who might be a neighbor teacher or somebody across the hall that can assist if I have a question or need. Helping people feel comfortable in talking to the sub-union, that's something that they felt was incredibly critical as well. But you're right as well, the rate of pay changing has been a factor, too.
Before we further this portion of the discussion, just, it sounds like it's getting too close to a specific instance, and particularly involving potentially specific individuals. Sounds like something to take up at a different time. I would strongly recommend.
Great. Can I actually also suggest, like, I like the term "guest teacher." Is this something that we market, when we market out for subs, guest teachers, do we use the word "guest"?
We have used the word "substitute teacher." We actually have a brochure that Lori Blakesley did to send out to try to hire substitute teachers. But we've called them substitute teachers in the brochure, and that's what we've done.
But I think the term is, it's just, it's just a better term. It's more inviting.
Yes, some of our schools are using that.
You feel like you're, you know, you're going somewhere to be honored to visit, essentially? It's, other than sub?
Yeah, I think it is. I think what it really comes down to is, you can call it what you want, but it's how they feel when they're there.
Right.
And that's, we know schools who are working really hard to make sure that they have a buddy person, they know they are greeted at the front desk, they have, everything is there. Those, those, those schools have an easier time filling their sub vacancies.
Michelle?
Just as a follow-up, I absolutely agree with you, Rhonda. And I, when we refer to our guest teachers as guest teachers, as building principals, having used that term instead of a sub, and I would always tell the students, they are our guests, and we treat them like our guests at our house. So I think that that conversation should be pursued a little more, because as students, you know, you know, you tell them, I mean, we're lucky they're here, or otherwise, you wouldn't have this opportunity. I mean, I think that there's just a change in mindset if you, if, and words matter. So I would like to pursue it.
If you read on social media, you're going to like the way it sounds when you're reading it as well. If it's posted on the Facebook page that they're looking for guests, it just sounds better. Okay, any other comments about the employment update, which is our topic? Comments or concerns? Okay, then we've got the staff turnover report.
The staff turnover report was provided to you. It's an attachment on the, on Neptun. And when we look at our overall turnover, we are at 6.06%, and I gave you the ratios. This is, does not include, it includes regular employees who left for reasons other than retirement or illness. That's the total turnover. And when we look at educators, which is all of the teachers in the teacher bargaining unit, 6.4.66%, and again, that does not include our retirees and people who left for illnesses. Our turnover is, is low. And I think in part of that, that doesn't mean that we won't continue to work on keeping it low or lowering it. We're looking at the exit data that we're gathering, and looking at that and the reasons for the turnover will help us retain even more people. With our centers work as well, we're focusing on providing support for the new teachers because we know that our newest teachers, new graduates, as well as teachers new to the district, that after the first year, second year, and third year, that's where the turnover is the greatest. And we'll be looking at that, looking at the last cohort soon, I don't have that right now. But that's, that's when you tend to lose people. Once somebody is here for, say, five, six years, they tend to be fairly stable, except for mostly, you know, if somebody takes a promotion or they move away, return to a district near their home.
Jean, remind me, the centers acronym, what does that stand for?
John, you'll be with that.
I always have a hard time with that.
We'll call Terry Williams up, because she's our main contact.
The acronym is coming, yes. I just want to know, because we're doing it in caps, and I know that the E is deliberately skipped, but I don't want it to look like a typo in capital letters.
Yeah, and I, I'm spacing it right.
Sureing New Teacher Retention and Success.
So centers without the second E, but that's deliberate.
Yeah, that's deliberate, yeah.
Okay, all right, just like...
I apologize for not memorizing the acronym.
That's okay. The second E is missing. Normally, centers has a second E.
Surely question here.
You spelled centers.
Second paragraph talking about educator turnover, it says includes contracted teachers, includes those teachers in the bargaining unit. Isn't it true that, I mean, does that include all teachers, because since Act 10, not all the teachers are in the bargaining unit?
All of our teachers who get a contract, including all of the people services staff, are included in this.
Okay.
The teachers who do not get a contract would be what we're now calling L. The teachers who do not get a contract would be what we're now calling LTE. That the people who work perhaps for a year and they make the $190 an hour, they do not get a contract. Any long-term teacher. And in the past, you could, you could contract with those people. But right now, those folks are not issued a contract. But we're finding fewer and fewer teachers are willing to work for a year at the LTE rate. Because there's a shortage of teachers and they are able to get a regular contract. So, in the past, where we would have a person be off on a year-long leave, we could find an LTE. Not likely any longer.
Well, isn't that basically what the 4K program is?
The 4K?
The Wildlife Sanctuary program?
Those are educators who are hired through the city and they're not on contract with us.
But that's what they're, but that's what they are?
No, I think that they have a regular position with the benefits through the city. Our LTEs only get the statutory benefits and health insurance. Because we have to provide that.
Yeah, that should be clarified.
We can clarify that. I know Ann Barsh, if you could clarify that for the whole board, that would be helpful. Or do you, can you speak to it right now, just to clarify?
Is it four, is it a Model 3 at the Wildlife Sanctuary?
Yes. That's correct. The Wildlife Sanctuary is a Model 3 program and that is a community partnership program. So, the City of Green Bay employs the teacher at Oak, which is the nature-based. So, they, they have their own pay, they have their own calendar that we ask that they follow our calendar, but they are not limited term, they are employed by the city. Does that make sense? It does make sense, but I will say it's very confusing to the public what that situation is. Yeah. We do, we have nine Model 3. And they're community-based, the majority are in encompass childcare programs. So that, and that is a community partnership. We support, you know, they benefit from our students, but they do run the program and employ the teacher through their employment. We support, and at the Oak Center, the Wildlife Sanctuary, Mary McCabe, our Director of Preschool Programs, does supervise the teacher because she's got the education background. The people there are not licensed administrators.
And the Model 3 program, is it, it was required in order to get the 4K funding initially?
It was initially and it's a, it's a, something that we continue to do because it is a really good partnership with our community. It's beneficial to encompass into those programs. And it supports us, you know, it's a really very solid partnership. And for instance, at the Oak Center, at the Wildlife Sanctuary, we have added an additional classroom that will be starting this fall with a morning session and afternoon session. So, that's, that's been a nice addition. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on the teacher turnover, staff turnover?
Actually, can I just, I know that you send out emails and you wish success to a lot of administrators that are moving on or changing, doing something different. It would be great to see that with teachers as well. I have not seen that. I think it would feel, it would be, it would be a nice thing to do.
We can certainly provide that, perhaps in the staff scoop.
I mean, especially since it's, you know, as you said, it's relatively low turnover. So, it would be nice to have that as well. I think they would appreciate that.
I think, I think we can do that. I want to make sure that the employee wants us to do that because we, we don't always know where the person's going to go and sometimes the person doesn't choose to let us know. But, you know, if we can just maybe get their permission to do it.
Right, I'm assuming you do that with the administrators?
No, we don't.
You just do it?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, they're administrators and, you know, we're informing people that that person is no longer there. So, it's, it's public when they leave. And, well, our teachers as well, when they resign, because it's always on the board agenda, so I suppose.
But the email itself is in public.
No, the email's not public.
Right, that's to staff.
Yes, yes. We could, we can do that for the staff and let them know.
Laura.
I have a question about paraprofessionals. How many paraprofessionals does our district employ?
About 300.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jean. Now, we have the Open Enrollment Survey Project Focus Group and Professional Development Proposal.
Sure, thank you. Jake Oliverson is not here, but he is the Director of Procurement and he put out the RFP for this particular, actually, a request for information. Just for background, the conversation of open enrollment has been a very important conversation here in the state of Wisconsin since 1998, '99, when open enrollment began. And it's been over a period of time, particularly the data between 2010 and now shows an increase of open enrollment out across not only Green Bay, but across the state. Significant increases in families who have taken that opportunity to choice to a neighboring district or take advantage of even moving within the school district to participate in different options for their children, all in public education. When the program actually began in the first year, 2,464 students open enrolled to out-of-school districts across the state. And in 1516, the year across the state to non-resident school districts grew significantly to the 55,737. With that also is a funding stream that has come. There is a portion of a per pupil that's transferred to the non-resident district out of the funding that comes from this, for the student from the state. That particular amount in '98, '99 was 4,543 and has increased, I believe, to 7,352 this last school year. And again, I think it's really important to recognize, speaking with Senator Olson, that the recognition is that the intent behind open enrollment was to afford parents the opportunity to choice into a non-resident district as far as their choice in another public school. But there is also a remainder of funding that stayed with the school district with the recognition that they didn't want the district to be harmed by a child. One child leaving, for example, out of a classroom. So, a first-grade student from a class of 23 may choose to open and roll out and then you still can't reduce the staffing or the space or what have you. So, they put that provision in there and that still holds today. So, there is an amount of money that always stays with the resident school district when students open and roll out. This is a direction from the Board of Education to go out for a request for information or proposal to move forward, to have a clear understanding of the reasons why people are choosing to leave. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. When we look at Green Bay specifically, we see that in 2010, the Green Bay area public schools had approximately, well, according to the Department of Public Instruction, 942 students open and roll out. By 2016, '17, the number of open enrollees out of the district was 2,025. So, an increase. And I think it should be noted that it isn't that nothing has been done to capture that market share. And I think that shows in the open enrollment in, that it has somewhat had impact. We have provided additional pathways and opportunities for our students around programming and whatnot, going from an open enrollment in of 123 and to date, 1617. So, you start to see that there are some very concerning numbers. However, if you look at the total enrollment, what you can see that's very, very interesting when you look is the fact that, I'm going to go back to the open enrollment out. One of the pieces that I put in there on the, in the part of the open enrollment story is that 62% of the students out of that 2,025 actually never attended a Green Bay public school. They choiced before they even put a foot in the door. And that, that accounts for 1,255 students who've never been in a Green Bay public school as an attendee. So, you start to look at what those numbers look like. So, in 1617, we had basically with, we had 770 students cumulatively over a number of years who had attended a Green Bay public school and who left. In addition, we had 401 come in from outside other districts. I think what's really important to recognize is that this is a concern to all of us. We have looked at, and it came out very strongly in the, particularly in the boundary study, where you could see very porous boundaries seem to have higher numbers of students open enrolling out to neighboring districts. For example, and I put it in the report, a school that's located right on the de-pere attendance boundary has an open enrollment of approximately a little over 20% of their students. Whereas a school that's more centrally located, not right on a boundary, has significantly less. And I use the Dan's Elementary, where there's an open enrollment of 1.6%. So, it's very, very important to keep that in mind as well. But again, these are trends and things we're looking at. Another trend that we're seeing is that it could well be influenced by offerings. And I know Jen spoke briefly, the principal at John Dewey, talked about the fact that students are coming back for the online learning program. One of the things the district could see in the data is that without a comprehensive online learning program, we were losing students to Appleton, we were losing students to an online school in Madison and so forth. And now that once we've created our own line comprehensive program, online learning, students are returning to the district as well. So, we could see that. We also could see via anecdotal feedback that, and we believe this to be true, that another factor is some of our schools actually have very limited space. So, if a parent has chosen to choice their children into a particular school and they don't get their first choice, they may not, they may choose to choice somewhere else in a neighboring district. So, we see that as well, that some of our schools are actually very full and we can't accept students. So, as we've been looking at this, thinking about the market share, recognizing the fact, if you look at our overall enrollment, in 2010, the Green Bay public schools' overall enrollment was 20,376. If you look at 2017, '18, our enrollment was 20,663. And at first thought, you'd probably think, "Well, there's 2,000 students missing, how can that be?" And it's because the district has been gaining enrollment from students moving into the, to the district and attending our schools. So, the impact, the fiscal impact is important to keep in front of us because when enrollment starts to decline, it's when it really starts to be very problematic on our students in our classrooms and in our schools. So, we are very, very concerned about that and at a pretty very critical juncture in this conversation. And I believe that's why the board has said, "Go out and, and talk to where we can have companies who might help us address those concerns." And interestingly enough, just in the last couple of years, there are a couple of companies that are out there doing these kinds of surveys. Family exit surveys, looking at and talking to the parent groups who have chosen to open and enroll their child from the district, for example, to a neighboring district. There are also surveys that capture and try to capture, especially around focus groups, parents who have chosen not to even enroll their child in their attendance area. And then, of course, there's also the group of parents who choose to keep their children in our school districts. So, those are the three different parent groups. The proposal that you see before you tonight is a proposal that is intended to really start to gain a clearer understanding of the motivations and perceptions and priorities of the three different groups of families. And when you, when we looked at the two companies that were doing this kind of work, the company that we're asking the board to consider moving forward is a company that really offers a collaborative approach to this kind of work and proposed some solutions that I think really would start to address issues around market share. And that would be in a survey where you would actually survey families who exit the system and have those conversations to understand in greater detail why. And then also, within that framework, to look at those focus groups and have those conversations with families from the three different kinds of groups that I spoke to, the families who stay, families who choose to opt out, and families who have not attended and have those conversations. So, those are, those are the first phase that I would say would probably give us the most information in terms of where we need to go next. We already do a parent satisfaction survey as well, so to duplicate that effort didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So, really looking at, for the board's consideration, as the first step in terms of focus groups, really looking at the parents who have chosen to either stay, choice out, or exit, but in a more deep look. And then looking at the parents who choose to exit and why. And then the other component that they offer is a really important component as well that really looks at what the feedback is telling you and then the customer service piece. So, I've had some conversations and done some deeper dive into school districts that are actually, have used these surveys. I'm in conversation right now and hope to get even more information from a very large school district. I think they serve 160,000 students in North Carolina. It's the Wake County Public School System in North Carolina, yep, and it's 160. And they actually are on their second exit survey and they found it to be very valuable and insightful into where they should go. And then the other conversation that is important is really around the customer service. And the conversation with that particular district, it's Austin, Texas, they, they did a great deal of professional learning around re-establishing a vision for customer service and a standard. They created a standard in their schools, across many, many schools, to have a very standardized approach so that everybody was moving forward on the same page. And they found that very valuable as well. So, that's the proposal on the table. And then, community priorities would be the next step if the board is interested in pursuing these.
Do these companies have any sort of testimonial? We came in, we helped you figure this out. And then now, this school district is, has, you know, improved on their open enrollment?
In terms of the resource and supports, there are testimonials that we put the link to in terms of the value add. And I think that, that speaking with the family exit survey, I think that they're, you know, in terms of the actual data, that's what I'm pursuing with the gentleman who said they've gotten valuable insights, which tells us.
They've got their case studies.
That's right.
Yep, and they've talked about valuable insights as to what they've done. And then they've taken those steps forward to address those market shares around the family exit surveys. The company that is using just even the market share, I think the conversation was interesting that they said, "You know, oftentimes, parents who choose not to send their children to a school district and have never attended may have heard from somebody who did attend, who did not have a positive experience." So, they felt that the customer service piece was really an important place to go and to start as well. So, to your point Rhonda, I'm trying to get confirmed if there's data sets behind because there are, there is anecdotal testimonial.
Right.
And from very, very large districts that they found it helpful and insightful. But as far as actual data, hard data, I'm not finding a significant amount of that, other than the fact that it's pointed them in directions where they can take some really important steps to address their needs.
Michelle, do you remind me, what is our, what was our 1718 per pupil revenue?
I'm in a...
94. This year will be a little about 95.
So, yeah.
So, you're looking for...
Well, I'm just, you'll be voting, but I just want questions so that I can bring back and respond to any questions that you might have. And again, still working with the company that's gone out for their second exit, and we've been communicating via email, and so I need to talk to him more in person, or not in person. He's far away.
So, next, our next meeting, it, it sounded like you weren't recommending all of these things.
Correct.
So, will you come with more specific what we're approving?
Yes. In the governance request, Dr. Warren, if you look, the request is that the board approved the solutions associated with the following, that the first year we would do the focus groups, particularly getting a greater depth and understanding. And one of the things, using all three groups, it gives you a really nice, broad, deep understanding of why people stay, why people are going, and why people haven't come. So, that would be one piece. I think that the other piece is really looking at the family exit survey, and then they help with understanding what the data are saying, and why that matters, and what steps we could take to customize and collaborate with our own. And then the other piece is around customer service. And it was interesting in the conversation, what they did is they really did a nice job, based on the person that I was talking to, of really customizing it to the district. In other words, we talk about equity and engagement and excellence. If, if our customer service is focused around excellence and engagement, and recognizing and honoring all people, that, I mean, and so I would see that as a critical tie around how we treat our families and equity as well. So, really, our core values within that framework of that professional learning, I believe, would be really important so that we have a standard of practice based on, on what the Board of Education has identified as our core values as a school district. So, I can see that as a very valuable, important step for a standard within all of our schools as well.
Can I add the word communication as well? I think that's very, very important.
So, that would be the request.
Okay, sorry. I thought it ended after...
No, it kind of goes on and on. It doesn't go on and on and on.
Can we talk in open session about, you know, whether or not we would move forward with a consideration of a phone, you know, because I think that's something that, because some of this is phone, like they're calling, some of it is more surveys, some of it is...
There, there were two proposals for consideration, and the phone piece is something that it doesn't, the, the company we're moving forward doesn't have phone.
So, we're not, we're not entertaining that at all?
That was, that's not the recommended piece, just because it's so difficult to contact.
I mean, I'm not, I'm definitely not supportive of that. I just want, because we had talked earlier.
Yeah, that would not be in this. And K-12 doesn't offer that. They have a comprehensive survey. What, what I, what they also offer from the service is to help, it goes to your, your word communication. They will help you roll this out, so that the community has, has a really clear understanding of the why, and they'll also help bring out the whole plan and create the supports needed around a communication campaign, so that it's, it becomes very paramount that people understand what the district is trying to do and gather data for.
Can, can we, in the governance request and what comes forward to us in two weeks, just specify that that focus groups is specifically three?
Yeah, it should say.
It says in there, but it doesn't say in the governance request.
Oh, recommended three with two facilities.
Yes.
Yes.
To just spell that out, so it's not an unlimited number of focus groups. Because I assume that we could, I mean, is that, can, will they do four if we, I mean, if we do three and then we...
They probably would do unlimited, but...
They would?
Yeah, they possibly would.
I mean, I'm just thinking if we are getting a tremendous amount of information from those focus groups, and it's determined that we...
Companies are usually, I, I'm understanding, based on my communication with people who have engaged with their services, they're very flexible, they're very collaborative because they want to deliver a very good product so that you want, so that you invite them back for another survey. I mean, it's, it's, it's their, their value add and return on investment. I think that they really are interested in. And I also think that one of the conversations, it, it, it feels like they're interested in, it's not only about a financial proposition, but they want to help school districts, and they want schools to be successful. I, I felt that in conver, in the communications with them and the phone conversations that we've had, so. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
And that concludes...
No, you have a human resource...
Excuse me, Human Resources Programmer Coordinator Job Description.
This job description is being brought to you to recommend a coordinator for the programmers. We currently have three programmers. We intend to have four programmers. And with the change in the staffing, with Josh Pachek assuming the director position, Diane is not filling his position, but is asking for a person to coordinate the programming work, which is some of the work that Josh had once done. The position would be posted internally to give our current programmers opportunity to apply for it, and it, we don't anticipate it adding another individual to the team. Anything else you wanted to add?
This person would, would also serve as point of contact. So, when other departments have a need from our programmers, we would have one person that they go to for that assistance. And then this person would coordinate the work of the team.
Questions, comments? And it is a significant cost savings because you're not, they're, they're not the same level. Is that accurate?
Correct. Joshua, when he was the, the lead programmer, he was making a higher income than now what, what, you know, we're not replacing him at that high level, and, and we are putting a small amount onto this programmer coordinator position to, to take care of that, those duties that we had talked about.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Thank you.
Now, that concludes organizational work support. And I will move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prin 1, Prin C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in pursuit to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prin 1, Prin F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for Par, Prin B, applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters. The meeting will begin in open session to consider the appropriate motion for closed session, so provided by law. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session. Sandy?
Aye.
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 Eric Six Zero will convene across the hall.
I found your slip.